And good evening. Today is August the 6th. Right now it is 7:34 and I'm calling to order this evening's meeting of the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. For those, for the benefit of those who have not participated in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, our procedures are as follows. The Secretary will read the legal notice of the meeting as published in local newspapers. The applicant will be invited to come forward and present the case explaining to the commission and others present what is being requested of this property. Comments of town agencies will be read for each application if there are any. First, there'll be clarifying questions from the commissioners, then there will be an opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Next, we'll ask those who want to support the application to come forward. Second, we'll ask those opposing the application to come forward as this is a public meeting and must be recorded. It'll be necessary for speakers to identify themselves by stating their name and address before addressing the commission. The applicant will then be free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearing and the regular meeting during which time the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as to the decision of the commission and has the right to appeal to superior court if desired. Decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Planning and Zoning Office at (203453) 8039 after 9:00 a.m. Seated tonight are the following members of the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. We have Walter Corbier, I'm Rich Meyer, we have Richard Wallace, we have Tom Cost, Ray Bauer, Frank DeAndrea, Josh Hirschman, staff tonight, Reggie Reed, George Crowell, Katie Arbuckle, and Shannon Gale is running the cameras for us. Mr. Secretary, please read the notice.
Legal notice, Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on August 6, 2014 at 7:30 p.m. at the Nathaniel B. Green Community Center, Menonka Tuck Room, 2nd floor, 32 Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut for the following purposes. Number one, Guilford, a better chance, 143 Church Street, map 46, lot 135, Zone R1 and CSV, special permit, additional lot coverage for decks in the R1 zone, section 273-37. Number two, Person, Martha, 42 and 43, Marshall Avenue, map 10, lot 57, Zone R2, Coastal Area Management Site Plan, construction of single-family dwelling, section 273-91. Number three, McManus, Chris, 78 Seaside Avenue, map 29, lot 118, Zone R3, Coastal Area Management Site Plan, demolition and reconstruction of single-family dwelling, section 273-91. Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the office of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Town Hall South, 50 Boston Street, Guilford, Connecticut. At this hearing, persons may attend and be heard and written communications will be received. Dated at Guilford, Connecticut, the 16th day of July 2014, Richard Meyer, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Any seconds?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're open. No opposed, no whatever. So first one up, we have Martha Pearson. Do we have anyone presenting? We sure do.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. For the record, my name is Tom Cronin. I'm an attorney at law. My local office is at 20 Water Street here in the town. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Martha Person, who's in the back. Just raise your hand so everybody knows who you are. And the chief presenter tonight is Michael Harkin, who is, was right next to me.
Right here.
He needs to be bigger. Michael Harkin is our professional engineer and he's going to cover the really important part of tonight's program. The only reason I'm up here tonight is to kind of connect you back, those of you who were part of this board several months ago, because this is not the first time this matter has at least come into the purview of planning and zoning. It was here several months ago. Oh, and I should also mention Larry Fisher's our surveyor. Larry was not able to make it tonight, but he did all the survey work that underpinned the application. When this application was first filed, filed originally several months ago, a question arose about the location of the proposed septic system and whether or not my client and this person had the legal right to put the septic system on that property. Larry Fisher, who's a pretty experienced surveyor, and I, who try to be at least a semi-competent attorney, both came to the opinion that she had the legal right to do that. There was, however, some kind of rumbling that maybe she didn't. And it seemed to us to be unfair and unwise to bring that unresolved question in front of you. And even though you don't decide title questions, it was just a sticky wicket. And we thought that the better part of valor was for us to address, even though we didn't think it was necessary, to address the issue of legal rights with the association, which we did. And Brian's here tonight is actually part of those discussions. So we've come back in front of you tonight with a written easement agreement that clearly establishes our legal right, not necessarily our zoning right or our CAM right, but our legal right to do this. So that issue hopefully is completely off the table. And unless you have questions about that, we can go right to the technical side and get into the nuts and bolts of the CAM, which is right here. So I just did want to connect that back. If you do remember any of that, that's the history, that's the background, that's the resolution. Okay? Any questions? Then the main event.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Michael Harkin. I'm a professional engineer and principal of Harkin Engineering located at 78 Wolf Hollow Lane in the town of Killianworth, Connecticut. Again, here tonight on behalf of my client, Martha Person, for the property that she owns over in Mulberry Point, also known as lots 42 and 43 on Marshall Ave, also referred to as parcel C. To bring you up on Martha Person, her family has lived in Mulberry Point and owned property there for about 60 to 70 years. Their first parcel fronted Mulberry Point, the waterway, this is an area in back that was left over after the sale of their first parcel. So this area is on back, it has fronts on Marshall and Decatur Ave. We're here tonight for a simple CAM application. It's important to note before we get started on the nuts and bolts of the project that what you see in front of you meets all Planning and Zoning regulations. It meets the bulk requirements as far as setback, lot coverage. It also meets the health code, the public health code. We have a letter that I believe will be read into the file from Dennis Johnson that states that the septic system and the well on this site does meet the health code. And thirdly, the DEEP, obviously it's CAM application, it has to go to DEEP. DEEP has chimed on and just had one little minor issue, which I believe your environmental planner, Mr. Kevin McGee, took care of in his letter. That should also be read in. Kevin McGee, your environmental planner, had also written basically a favorable letter. There are some stipulations on that letter. When it gets read in, just that you know, we don't object to any of the items that he likes to bring to light and have put on his plan. So the parcel itself is located in the northerly section of Decatur Ave and Marshall. We're proposing a two-bedroom house. Again, it's a two-bedroom house. It will be raised up to meet the FEMA flood height requirements. All of the heating and mechanical will be strung from the ceiling. So we do meet, again, with the FEMA requirements with the mechanicals. There's a mechanical note on the plan. There is an area that he made elevated for the propane tanks. According to the building code and the new FEMA regulations, that propane tank, which will heat the unit, has to be raised up out of the flood zone as well as strapped. That is done. We also have the septic tank and the proposed septic area that you see over centrally located on the lot. Again, Dennis Johnson has approved that. We also show the 100% reserve area that meets the health code requirements. On our plan, we do not show any driveway for this parcel. All the parking will be done on a separate parcel that Martha Person owns that is to the south of the project site. The area on the adjacent to where we'll be parking, there will be the proposed well. Tom had talked about the easement that has been granted for that well line that will come across and service the proposed house. Additionally, you see that there, again, there's no driveway, but there is a small walkway that begins on Martha's property and comes up and will service the front area. In our application, we had written that there is a garage on this proposed dwelling. There will be a garage, but the garage won't have an entryway, per se, a garage door on the front side. It will have the garage door in the backside. The garage door isn't for vehicles, it's just for personal storage to get bicycles and things like that into that area. Again, you cannot pull a car in there because all of the uppers for the heating and plumbing system will be strung from the ceiling. So you can't physically park in there. My client has no intent to drive a car in there. I just want to make that clear for the record. So on the plan itself, we show multiple erosion control measures. We saw, we show a clearing limit line that will be staked prior to any cutting and grading. On our second sheet, we show all the requirements for the erosion controls, dust control. And it's important to note, we went above and beyond on this project. The septic system itself, you can see this hatched area located on our sheet D1, that is a filter fabric, like a geotextile mat, that is going to be placed around the whole perimeter to prevent any erosion at that high tide or big storm or hurricane event in that area. So it's preventing the septic system from being, helping to prevent the septic system from being washed out if you have this large monstrosity of a hurricane. Within your packets, you'll see that there was a study done by our wetlands soil scientist, Mr. Richard Snarsky. Your environmental planner, Mr. Kevin McGee, asked that before we physically submit this plan, we needed to prove to him that the water level does not come up into this property and does not surpass the wetland flags that our soil scientists had put on there. So Mr. McGee found the date, which I believe was October of last year, it could have been November, of the highest tide and the highest moon. It's documented that that is the highest peak that that water level would rise. And we had a specific time area that that would occur as well, the high tide. Mr. Snarsky was out there for four hours with myself. We monitored that elevation as well at the point where it physically draws in, which is a pipe cover, as well as the area on Martha's site. The water level never came to within 20, came within 25 feet of the wetlands flags that were physically put up by Mr. Snarsky. So that water level at its highest tide, at its highest peak, never even got to those flags that Mr. Snarsky put in there. So again, on the highest flood elevation of the year, the floodwaters never came up onto that project site. So with that being said, that concludes my presentation. I tried to keep it brief. I'd be happy to answer any question that you may have at this time. And if I can't answer them, I'd be more than happy to come back with those answers.
Well, thank you. Do we have any questions?
You do, Tom. In the letters that we have, and I don't know if they need to read them in, but there seems to be some conflict or at least difference in what Kevin McGee is talking about and what John Goucher is talking about in terms of the runoff and the keeping that water on the property.
Yes, sir.
Which plan is your, do you address with this, what you're asking approval for? Which way are you going here?
Great question. If I could just be more specific so everybody understands the question. In a town of Guilford, the town requires that we handle the post-development, when a runoff to make it to a pre-development condition. That means the water coming off-site before you start working on the project has to be equal after the project is done. That's usually accomplished by an underground detention system. Mr. McGee, when he does his plans, I believe that, as well as Ms. Reed, they look for that in every plan that comes in. We subsequently showed the galley system in order to handle that post-development rate of runoff. So we showed them on our plans. We showed them on the previous application and we showed them on this application. The letter from Mr. Goucher had looked at that and didn't believe that they were necessarily going to work in their current location and didn't like them and liked us to do something else. Just have the gutters go in the sheet flow, just have them come into a stone trench. I brought that up to Mr. McGee's attention because he was the one that put that up to send to. And Mr. McGee's belief was, hey, we do need them there and they will work. As far as we're concerned, it will work both ways, with or without. We left them on the plan to satisfy the town's requirements. Mr. Goucher's letter is stating that he doesn't like the idea of having them there and he would like some alternative. So as far as the engineer and the applicant, we're kind of stuck in the middle. DEEP wants us to do one thing, the town staff is asking us to do another. So what we showed was what the town is requiring, which is those galleys that are in place. And we leave it up to the commission to make the decision whether they should stay or get taken out to meet DEEP's request. Mr. McGee, in his letter, when you read it, is basically pro. He specifically addresses that, that he would like them to stay and believes that they will work and satisfy the town's requirements.
Should, should we read these? And what's Tom has done with this question?
So it seems like that the town, because we have, the town has regulations that requires, basically in this case, drainage underneath the ground to store the first inch of water, right?
Correct.
And it's, if I understand John Goucher, he is more interested in using a natural approach to runoff?
Yes, sir. Kind of sheet flow, let the gutters come down and let it just sheet flow out.
What would happen, someone else want to ask a question?
Your own.
What would happen if, given, you know, an unusually high water rise to the point that you, I mean, you're putting the building up off the ground, assuming that there could be a hurricane or something that's going to cause the water to come in over that gall o.
Yes.
What's the effect, what is that, if you had that large storm surge, or whatever you want to call it?
Yes, sir.
What effect does it have the gall in the ground? What effect does it have on that gall?
Yeah, the galleys are weak enough to stay where they are. The water will be over the top of them if you had a very, very large storm, category two, per se hurricane in that area. Virtually this whole area would have water all over it, the houses in the front and the back. So everything would be submerged. The galley system that is in place would still be in place. The water would trickle down, you know, as a storm rolls out into a point, you know, a couple of days later that all the water would be out of there. The ground will infiltrate it and then it will be back to its normal condition. Whereas if you just had the roof leaders, they would just drain off and come in dub. There really is no negative effect to have them there. And actually, we're calling that area to be raised up and septic gravel to be put around it to help better infiltrate that. Now, that's per the town. If the town wants that, we're more than happy to do it. We show it. We're also more than happy to take it out because in a lot of towns, we just sheet flow it. And there's not a requirement to capture that one inch. So.
Does legally, does Kevin's position hold over John Goucher's position?
I don't, I don't, can't answer that question.
I'll answer that if you don't mind. For the record, Attorney Tom Cronin, both positions are legally defensible and ultimately it falls to the board to decide. Both of those are inputs for the board's consideration. I think what Mr. Harkin has done is he's captured what I think is Mr. McGee's primary orientation, which is compliance with, among other things, your stormwater management program, whereas Mr. Goucher's orientation is more specifically focused on DEEP. I think the important news for the board is that either one works from an engineering perspective. Each one has a little bit, a little bit of good, a little bit of maybe not so good, but neither one would be a disqualifier for the project. It's kind of six of one, half of the other, you know, plus minus one. But neither one necessarily takes legal precedence under any standard I'm aware of.
Just one other quick question. I know you have the house put on there, but there's no house plan, I assume, at this point.
There is no house plan at this point.
Okay, so we don't know what the material is going to be on the roof of the house.
Correct. I'll put it this way, sir, that all the construction has to be done in compliance with the FEMA regulations that are in place now and in place when it's being built. So specifically, if it's an asphalt shingle, it would have to be specific, specific asphalt shingles that are called out in order to withstand the wind loads in that section. It has to meet all the current FEMA requirements for wind loads. And that's the same thing for windows, for the sheeting. When you're down by the water in these flood zones, there's certain nailing that you have to do. There's a whole process. We didn't physically go into the full design of the structure right now because it's a very detailed and detailed process, even the foundation. Now with the FEMA requirements, they require a specific and precise design on these.
Thank you. Michael, I want to ask you a question. I would assume that all the homes that are similarly situated in a similar area would have similar problems. And this home meets current requirements, which are stricter than other homes in the area that were built in earlier years.
That is correct, to a point. That is correct, that they have to be raised to meet the new elevations. They have to meet the more stringent code that's in place now. Building 10 years ago on the shore was a lot different than it was now due to Sandy and Irene. So I believe in general, that statement is correct as a whole.
All right.
Do you have any freeboard above the elevation that's required?
Yes, we do. Basically, we have, the foot elevation in that zone is an 8012, 8013. We're at a finished floor, top of floor of 20. So you drop down to 19 for the lowest member. You have about a six-foot freeboard to hang up, six feet, to hang all of our mechanicals, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, our mechanicals have to be suspended from the ceilings.
So you put that much freeboard in for a functional purpose?
That's correct. And it helps provide in the rear of the area that, that storage to get.
Who wants to read these letters?
I'll start.
You want to start?
Yep.
Please do.
The Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission from Kevin McGee, dated August 6. The information provided indicates that a new two-bedroom house, septic system, parking area, and stormwater management system will be constructed on the property. Stormwater management system consists of an underground infiltration system designed to control, infiltrate water from the building's roof gutters. John Goucher, environmental analyst at Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, has some concerns regarding the infiltration galleries being installed too close to a slope and that a perched groundwater table may be located under the system. Based on my review of the stormwater infiltration galleries, I do not, I do, I do not see a concern with groundwater since the bottom of the galleries are about three feet above the groundwater table and any unsuitable material can be dug out and be replaced with select fill. John Goucher's other concern is regarding the future interests of a property owner to create an erosion control system against the grading created for the sanitary system and the stormwater infiltration galleries. Erosion of the sanitary system is partially controlled by the infiltration of geotextile matting over the leaching fields and stormwater galleries. The general sequence of construction as shown on the plan provides for erosion and sedimentation control measures that are designed to protect the adjacent coastal resources during the construction process. In order to make sure the coastal resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. The town of Guilford zoning enforcement office should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any demolition on-site regrading. Soil stock, two soil stockpiles should be contained by silt fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be backed by orange construction fencing and be maintained under, until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement. Three, a note should be placed on the coastal manage, on the coastal area management plan indicating the west side setback of the property will be maintained for view access according, access according, according to section 276-91J of the Planning and Zoning Regulations. The septic system and stormwater galleries should be protected with geotextile fabric anchored in accordance to manufacturer specification. Unsuitable material under the stormwater galleries shall be removed and replaced with select fill, septic sand, as shown on the detail for the sanitary system installation. Six, the storage and staging area shall be located outside of the tidal wetlands, above the coastal jurisdiction line as shown on the coastal site plan. Seven, except as specifically shown on the approved plans, no equipment or material including but not limited to fill, construction materials, excavated material or debris shall be disposed, placed, or stored in any wetlands on or off-site, nor shall any wetland be used as a staging area or accessway. Eight, that a note be placed on the plan indicating that a vegetated buffer remains between the stacked hay bales and coastal resources in accordance to section 276-91K of the Planning and Zoning Regulations. Nine, according to the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, Connecticut General Statute Section 22A-90 through 22A-112, no shoreline flood and erosion control structures are allowed to be constructed at the property since the property is being developed after January 1, 1986.
Wow. Well, thank you.
A lot of conditions.
There are a ton of conditions. That's good.
That's one letter.
That's one. Who else wants to read? We've got another one here. And we got Richard gone.
This one's from John Goucher, DEEP, to Kevin McGee. I have reviewed the additional information, including a revised site plan.
Thank you.
Dated May 2, 2013, prepared by Harkin Engineering. The information and plan changes were made in part in response to preliminary comments we emailed you and the project manager. The revisions to the site plan include all the requested information. While we recommended that the proposed infiltration gallery system be eliminated from the plan, it appears that it is being left on the plan to meet local requirements and not necessarily as the preferred approach. Attached, please find copy of EPA's Drain Field Fact Sheet. Please refer to the design criteria of the document. I highlighted some of the criteria that proposed system appears not to meet. The proposed gallery system is proposed too close to the adjacent building. A minimum 10 feet downgrade is recommended. It is being proposed adjacent to a slope that is too sharp, too steep relative to, to the guidance regarding the placement of subsurface drain fields. Additionally, the soil is not well-suited for subsurface infiltration, having what may be a perched water table. Finally, it is unlikely that the system will be properly inspected or maintained, which would significantly minimize long-term effectiveness. A much more suitable and more effective approach to minimizing impacts from stormwater runoff would be to discharge roof runoff at a grade at multiple discharge points to reduce potential scour energy and slope erosion. With the majority of water discharged away from the steepest slopes, if some additional storage is desired, a stone trench, either slightly buried or exposed, could be located along the rear of the dwelling. Such a trench would provide some temporary storage and infiltrate stormwater higher above the groundwater table than the proposed gallery system, thus allowing more time for the soil, in the soil for treatment. The length of the trench may be limited to maintain any required separation distance from the proposed septic system leaching field. Please let me know if you have any concerns. John Goucher, Office of Long Island Sound Programs, 79 Elm Street, Hartford.
Very nice. I think there's something else on the back.
Yeah, I'll go ahead for that one. This is another letter to Kevin from John Goucher. Kevin, number seven, oh, well, I'll save the date a bit, July 31. Kevin, number 78, Seaside Ave. We have reviewed this proposal for a consistent.
Skip down.
What was that?
Skip down, halfway down.
Oh, lots, lots 42, oh geez. Got a lot of everything here. All right. Lots 42 and 43, Marshall Ave. My prior comment stands regarding infiltration galleries proposed along the rear of the dwelling. A longer gravel trench drain near the northwest property boundary may be a better approach along with using the front yard areas as runoff with some other approaches that would allow the 10-foot contour in the rear of the house to be moved closer to the foundation, thus monitoring the rear yard slope a bit. We continue to be concerned that a future owner will construct or seek to construct a flood and erosion control structure in response to future storm or runoff erosion. If the commission is okay with the proposed infiltration galleries in the rear yard, it might be helpful to consider acknowledging in any CSPR approval that future structural erosion control systems, structures would not be permissible given existing statutory policies. Let me know if you have any questions or if you need any additional information. John Goucher.
There's one more here.
There's more?
Yep.
One more.
Could I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
Just so the people in the audience understand, there's a flow here. The first letter from John Goucher The first letter from John Goucher, we should have probably read these in order.
Right.
The first letter from John Goucher was dated July 31st.
Yes.
The second, the second.
No, no, the first letter was dated May 14th.
May 14th, I'm sorry, May 14th.
2013.
The second, the second letter from John to Kevin was dated July 31st.
Yep.
The notice that we have about what Kevin would like to see, the final notice, was dated August 6th, which is today.
Today.
So there was a flow here. And then there's another letter here.
I'll read the last one. It's to the planning and zoning from Dennis Johnson, dated today. Soil tests conducted on the applicant-proposed lot on December 16, 2011, reveal suitable conditions for construction of an on-site two-bedroom septic system. The limits of coastal wetlands and maximum flowwater encroachment have been delineated based upon seasonal high tide monitoring of the site. All septic system setbacks distance between high tide lines and bodies of water are compliant with the public health code. Erosion control or washout protection measures of the leaching field have been designed into the plan through the installation of geotextile matting. These units will be installed in the topsoil layer placed over the leaching system. The leaching system has been designed to be installed, the requirement maximum, the required maximum of 18 inches from above the maximum groundwater table. The septic system is located a minimum of 75 feet away from all private wells. A subsurface rainwater collection gallery is located along the northeast side of the house. However, this type of gallery is permitted to be no closer than 25 feet to a private well as it is not considered a source of pollution. Based upon soil test results and site plan review, it is recommended that applicant's proposed building lot be approved.
Thank you very much. So, with all that in mind, do we have more questions?
I have one more question.
Go with it, ask them all.
Is there some approximation of the square footage of the house?
Yeah, I don't have it off the top of my head. The box is 33 feet by 24. Right now, we're just looking at a one-story house. Similar projects that can pass around architecturally, these are similar houses and we'll pass them around that are elevated, one-story.
So that's 800 feet.
We're trying to keep in conjunction with the neighborhood.
I have a question for Attorney General. So, in the letter from John Goucher, dated July 31st of this year, he said, he talked about there being, the galleries not being permissible given existing statutory policies. What, do you know what he's referring to?
I believe, I believe he said that the flood and erosion control structures were not permissible given existing statutory policies. Your question to me was literally, the galleries are not permissible.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I'm not answering the wrong question.
No, you guys, you sort of clarified.
The flood and erosion control structures. I guess I have two responses to that, all of which I guess kind of flip me here, the guess and no. If we were to try to create a flood and erosion control structure, I think we've got to come back in front of you to have any snowball's chance of having a flood. My guess is it wouldn't flood. If we built it without coming back to you, your capable staff would issue a cease and desist order and we'll be back in front of you again. So, the message in the letter is, I think, inviting you to put a condition on here, which I think is superfluous, but I have no problem with. You can't put anything on here that is a flood and erosion control structure.
And just a little bit more clarification, two years ago, the state put out a general statute that says no new seawalls and no new apartments in the shoreline. That's what that's referring to, that a potential purchaser of the home or Martha who's living there doesn't come back 10 years from now and want to put up a seawall. There's a general statute that says you can't build that on the shoreline.
Sorry, just so I get to be clear, I think your point is, there's really not a need for a condition because it's against the general statutes if we tried to do something anyway.
That's correct.
But just as we maybe did the overkill with the easement, we're not going to object if it goes on. It doesn't hurt.
And one more note we'd like to make. Kevin McGee's comments, although they were long, 80% are already addressed on the site plan, we just restated them. The other 20%, we don't have a problem with that.
Before we go to questions, I'd just like to ask, could you situate us by showing us where Mulberry Point Road itself is?
Yep. Mulberry Point Road is actually to the south. The previous parcel that Martha person owned actually runs Mulberry Point Road. Okay? This is the rear of the parcel. There was an application in front of the commission a few years ago for Doc Rollins'. Doc Rollins' parcel is actually adjacent to this one. And the backyard driveway actually comes up in this section. I believe Doc Rollins had a garage that was approved a few years back and built on his property.
We're driving past, we passed Brian's house on the left.
But you'd be coming down Decatur?
How much farther, yeah. We would turn onto Decatur.
You would turn on Decatur approximately maybe 300 feet up the road, follow it down and loop around?
You'd have to turn to Charles first.
Turn to Charles first.
Off Mulberry.
Frank? Ray?
Charles.
Tom? Josh, Tom?
I'm also.
I don't have any, so let's open up to questions from our guests. Do you have questions?
Hi, just one. You said someone came down during the tides low, tide high deck, and you said it did around 25 feet. How high did it come? Could you tell us specifically, please?
Could you also just tell us your name and address for the?
Oh, I'm sorry. The name is Helen Conrad, and the 33 Decatur, having the.
Thank you.
Just bear with me. The letter that was submitted to the file, again, was from New England Environmental Services, Mr. Richard Snarsky. It might be beneficial if it's read in into the file, who wants to read it. But basically, the analysis was done on October 17th, 2012. We were out there monitoring the covert that was out there. The high tide line was marked on the property with blue flags for number 1 through 11. The high tide line did not extend up to the tidal vegetation line, which I previously delineated. The high tide line was witnessed by Michael Harken of Harken Engineering. I believe that same day, we went and spoke to Mr. Kevin McGee. So if we come approximately 25 feet from where it was marked, it's approximately at elevation 2.9, 2.8. The subject site where the house is around elevation 10. Hope that answers your question.
Does that answer your question?
About 2.9 feet, the high tide.
2.9 is the elevation that it came up to in that area.
And then, high tide is that?
That is at the highest tide, at its highest point where it came up.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions? We have a question over here.
Don, map, 744 Mulberry Point Road. I also happen to own the marsh, which sides on the north and, yes, and the south. East and south, I'm sorry, not so much on the north. I'm literally half of the property. And I have several questions, but relative to the one that was just answered. High tide is an interesting factor. It isn't just how high the schedule says it's going to come up. It depends which way the wind is blowing. If the wind is blowing from the east, which most storms do, it floods the water into the sound and holds it in so that when the tide goes out, it can't all get out, and then more comes in. We have several tides like that in a year which cover the road. The town has already bonded money to raise that road because it gets flooded and it's not safe for vehicular traffic going across in terms of a fire department or police protection. So just the fact that the tide that day did what it was supposed to do doesn't mean that it does it every time we have a high tide or an exceptional high tide or a good rainstorm which brings all of the fresh water down from the entire bowl up above this house. I'm concerned, and there was a comment, that the storm drainage water and, I believe, the septic system is going to need constant maintenance and surveillance. And it was doubted in the letter, if I heard correctly, and it was difficult to hear. There was some doubt whether that would happen. The state and the town spends a lot of time on that marsh trying to maintain it, cut back on the growth of the frag mighty, lower the mosquito problem in there, they were in just yesterday, no, Monday, I'm sorry, spraying on the wall, on the waters, the trenches that are in there. Thirdly, there's a delineation on that map of the marshland. And I believe that that, does anyone know when that marshland was in fact marked out and flagged? Because we are very much aware that the tides, that the actual sea level is rising and has come up several inches in the last couple of decades, maybe three or four decades. Should we just say, well, that doesn't make any difference? The marsh is the marsh and it stops where it stopped 40 years ago. The fact that the tides get higher, the sea level is higher. When do we admit that a marsh has gotten bigger or smaller? It seems to me that we are setting ourselves up for failure before we even get started on this. And no matter what we say, we're showing blueprints and saying, well, it fits into the picture. And it does, according to past records of the marsh. Does it fit into a map? I doubt it. Is there any way of knowing? Somebody's got to decide it. And we get experts that tell us, except the people that live down there can tell you different stories. The fabric that's going to cover the top of the septic system, is that impervious to water? I'm asking a question. Does anyone have an answer?
Do you want to ask all your questions and I'll go back and answer them, or would you like me to go one by one?
I don't have that many more questions, but if it's not impervious to water, which I can assume that it's not, being a fabric, every time that floods over, it seems to me that the septic system fills. If I'm leading up the wrong trail, you can correct me, but if it's just the fabric over there, which we have put fabrics over, septic systems, or tar paper for 50 years to keep water drainage out of it. I don't know what the answer is to that, but we need to continually look and decide, when are we going to draw the line as to using the old records and not addressing the new realities of the rising. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
I'd like to respond to a couple of questions that I wrote down. As far as the septic and the stormwater galleys, they don't require any more attention than if a septic system was put here or put in North Guilford. A septic is a septic. Technically, it's supposed to be pumped out every year. Most people wait three or five years and some people don't pump them at all. That's the point. No matter if it's on the shoreline or North Guilford or Alton, Lynchfield County, that's just what happens. The reality is that, you know, our client has been there for 60, 70 years. She wants to remain there and be a good citizen. So if it takes pumping the septic every year, every two years, it's not a problem. But the septic and galleys will work no different than if it was in the center of town or North Guilford. As far as the marsh goes, we had a certified soil scientist that went out there and flagged and documented. I don't know when it was specifically documented, but I'm going to say 2012, early 2012, prior to us submitting the last application. Has the marsh changed? It may have changed. You know, it may have changed for the better, it may have changed for the worse. It may change on a day-to-day basis. I'm not a certified soil scientist, I can't tell you how much have changed, both positive and negative that it's made. Lastly, the elevation of the site is seven feet higher than this existing marshland. So even if the water level came up, you know, seven feet is, it's almost at the same elevation of all the adjacent houses that are already pre-existing in that neighborhood. So if this house is going to get totally inundated by water, also the other houses that are already pre-existing should or will get inundated with that same amount of water. So if those houses that periodically storms do come in, you know, that highest tide was the documented one, if a storm comes in, you're absolutely right, that tide might be higher. But a good judge is, is everybody else getting the same water? Are their septic systems getting filled up higher? Remember, we're designed to a higher constraint now than was previously required 10 years ago, five years ago, and even last month. They keep changing them. So as far as designing based on the old information, we're actually designing based on the new information. And I believe somebody on the commission had asked, well, why are you extra feet higher for freeboard with your finish floor? Because we anticipate that somewhere FEMA is going to change their regulations again, and we still want to meet the FEMA requirement on this parcel. So we've looked into that. We are designing towards the newer regulations that are in place and actually trying to predetermine what's going to happen in the future, which is difficult to do. But we've taken that, all that into consideration, and we've put it on that plan that you see here.
When was the marsh marked?
I don't know the specific date and time, but.
How far back? What's the farthest back it may have been?
Maybe, I'm thinking early 2012, but it could go back to November 2011, which, three years if that.
No earlier than 2011.
Remember, we specifically had it marked for this project with anticipation for the submittal. We actually held off with the submittal because the environmental planner had asked us to do the analysis of that covert to find out where that high water level actually went to.
Sir?
I think the concern, I won't speak for everyone, but I suspect the concern is not how high the house is, it's how low the ground is and what's in the ground. And my concern is, all of the houses in town that he refers to, whether they're in North Guilford or South Guilford, have septic, many of them have septic systems and they're either maintained or they're not. The problem that we're going to face here is, anything that is not maintained along that corridor of the marsh flows into the marsh. Water and whatever is in it flows downhill. In other yards where there is no pond or lake, it flows out and seeps into the ground locally. So that's our concern, my concern, in terms of the marsh itself and the outflow of that. Do you have an answer to the question on the fabric?
On the fabric, yep. The fabric itself is suctioned in by staples around two feet on center. It allows water to pass, but it holds the soil in place.
Yeah, no, I assumed that it helps.
It is structural.
From going into the septic system.
The water can flow in, correct?
Right.
Just like it can anyplace else. And then, when it flows out, it retains that soil in place.
So if the ground is covered with water in a storm, in a hurricane, or which it does, the water would go through that fabric into the septic system and fill the septic system?
Absolutely, just like it would on any of those lots.
That's correct, only this time, when it drains, it drains out into the marsh and not settles down into deeper ground.
That's not necessarily the case. Remember, the septic system meets 100% of the health code. In this event, you have a certain distance that you have to be offset from that marsh area, which we meet. You have a letter in front of you from the sanitarian and the director of health that says it meets 100%. says it meets 100% of the health code. So we meet all the design requirements. I think what Mr. Knapp is trying to say, if you have a septic system, it gets flooded over the top with water, then whatever's in that septic system flows out into the marsh. I think that's your point.
No, I'm saying that it not only fills the septic tank, but it also fills, the mat is over the drainage area. And so, yeah, any water that was in the drainage area has to go someplace.
Let me just refer to our sheet D1, which specifically talks about the septic tank. That's where all the solids, the toilet paper, you know, the fecal matters collected. We've already looked into this and taken these precautions, again, for what the state has mandated after these hurricanes when you're designing something by the shoreline. We're calling out for the tank, tank to be strapped with anti-voyancy blocks as required. That means if you get a big category storm in there, that tank's strapped down. It's not coming out of the ground. Second of all, the tank is also to be waterproof. It has to be waterproof and meet a vacuum test that we call out. Basically, they fill it with water to make sure it doesn't leak, so we don't get any of that material into the sound or the marsh. Second, I believe we are calling for locking covers. Two years ago, three years ago, a storm would come in and knock the covers off and you would have all that toilet paper and all that matter all over the streets and into the marshes and into the wetlands. We're putting locking covers on there in order to keep that all in place. So we've gone through and we've looked into that situation where if something does come in to that system, we've taken every precaution to keep it in that septic tank. That's been mandated throughout, you know, the last couple of years. The system itself, that's what we call gray water. You know, that's just the water. It doesn't have the contaminated particles like you would that you're holding inside the tank.
It's the leaching field that I'm talking about, not the tank.
The leaching field has the gray water in it that's already been filtered through. It's already gone through a filtration process when it's in there. The system that we proposed is a...
The leaching field needs to be 75 feet from the well because of gray water with the contaminants. Take 75 feet of soil to cleanse it. Is that correct?
I believe that's incorrect. You have to be, I believe you have to be 75 feet away, that is correct, from the source. But in the health code, as long as you pass 25 feet into an open water body or a water course, or 25 feet from a wetland, you are permitted to do so.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Who else has questions? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carol Kelleher and I live at 139 Marshall Avenue. I'm right next door to the property where this is. And I know for a fact that, I approach this. Okay. On this part of the property, there's no way that it's seven feet above the marshland. It's right down at the marshland. It may be one feet or two feet above. There's no seven feet down here where we pointed to the window. And I have a couple of questions. I want to know, this is a Google Earth picture of the marshland. This is where Martha wants to build. To me, this looks exactly like the marshland. This is my house. And when we have a hurricane, this is the water coming in. This is the water going over the road that Don Knapp mentioned. All the telephone poles are down from the water. This piece of property here is where Martha wants to build. There's water around it. Even in the winter, that marshland floods, there's snow on the ground here. There's water past my house. She wants to build here. It goes all the way back.
Sorry, there are parcels here?
There are parcels here. This is the water. This is...
To the other side of the blue house, did you say?
Doesn't change.
No, sure she's over here. The water comes in this way, so it passes her before.
She wants to take this guy to wire. About the questions?
I do have some things I'd like to point out. To me, this is a very fragile piece of land with a very delicate ecosystem. The marsh is here and this abuts the marsh on this side and all the way here. My house is here and I'd like to know if you're going to do any filling of that land? Because right now, when that marsh floods, the water does not connect to my basement. But I, that water does hold some, that land does hold some water when the hurricanes come, when a substantial high tide comes. And if she fills it and it doesn't hold that water, is it then all going to come into my basement, which is here, in the basement of the apartment next door? That's one of my questions.
The answer is, we are filling the elevation around the house. Let me go back to our first question. Let me go to the first question. The seven feet is the difference between where one individual had asked at the high watermark came on that day to where our finished floor elevation is going to be. That area that the high tide came up on that day was elevation 2.9. Our garage slab or basement slab, the slab, obviously we don't have a full basement, is at elevation 10. That's where that seven-foot elevation difference. And the reference was that it would take seven feet of water to come up and fill up to the garage level. And again, our house is up at elevation 20, I believe almost higher than any of the houses that are on the street. Going back, I did see some pictures. That culvert, does anybody know how far that culvert is from the project site? It has to be about 600, 700 feet from our site to that culvert. And additionally, I believe that the lady in front of me had said she lived next door to the parcel. And during the hurricane, if your, was your house flooded?
No.
And we're building directly next door. And her concern was that...
Your property is much lower than my property. That's my concern. And if you fill it, what's going to happen to the water that's in there?
We are filling it to the elevation 10, which is currently on that property and in the vicinity of that house. On the lower side of the property, she is absolutely correct, it does slope down in this area to elevation 3.7, and then it starts to come up. Elevation over the septic system is elevation 9.
Over the septic system?
Over the septic system.
Or is it under the septic system?
Under the septic system, right now, it's elevation 6.1. So it's coming up three feet.
But here is very low. Are you going to be filling in here?
We cannot, according to the town regulations as well as DEP regulations, fill in that area. We've demarcated a specific area that we will be clearing to pursuant to the environmental planner. And he had also asked that we put a orange construction fence at the Tullow slope. It's also important to note that we have in our plans that prior to any work on the site, that the clearing limit will be stated by a licensed land surveyor and there will be meeting with town and town staff prior to the start of construction, just to make sure we do not go over that boundary.
Okay. I have a couple of other questions. The association gave Martha an easement to pipe her well water across the path. But I believe that one of the stipulations with that easement was that there would be no garage. You said it's not going to be a garage for a vehicle, but I believe one of the stipulations of the easement was there would be no garage at all.
I'm not aware of the verbiage in the easement. In our application, we call out for a garage. We can easily change that verbiage to a storage space. There is no reference to a garage on our proposed plan. So if the commission would like, we'd like to physically change that garage requirement to a storage area.
Okay.
And again, we don't plan on parking anything in there. The reason for this area is to store lawn furniture, store bikes, store kayaks, which a lot of people in Mulberry Point do have.
Okay. There's an abandoned well on that property. Possible old well right here. My well is right here. If this sanitary system, she's not putting her well on this property. So this is a piece of property that can't support itself, can't have a well and a septic system on that same piece of property. And I think it's rather unusual for permits to, I'm not positive, but I think it's unusual to grant a building permit on a piece of property that can't really support itself.
Again, it's been reviewed by the health department. It's been approved by the health department.
Okay. Collectively, the homeowners of Mulberry Point over the years have paid the town of Guilford hundreds of thousands of dollars in property taxes. It hasn't gotten the city watered. We have a lot of wells down in Mulberry Point that are in trouble. The last thing we need down there is another sanitary system, especially one on a fragile piece of land that's right next to a marsh. And I think, I know the board does a fantastic job, but I think part of the board's responsibility is also to look out for the people who are paying large amounts in taxes for a proposal that might be detrimental to us. I know it's nice to get more tax dollars in for another house that would be there, but I do think that you do have to give some credence to what Don Knapp says, who owns the marsh and what I say, I'm right next door. This gentleman said that Martha's been down there for 60 years. I'd like to know when the last time Martha spent a full month in Mulberry Point was, because to my knowledge, she hasn't lived down there in a very long time. I just, I have many concerns about this property. It's very low. It's very fragile. Ospreys nest in the marsh. If this sanitary system does not hold, I'm afraid that it will harm the marsh. And we do get a lot of water in the storms and we get them winter and summer. It doesn't have to be a hurricane. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, for the record, Attorney Tom Brown. There are a lot of people here and there are multiple applications. And it occurs to me that we are getting a bit far afield. I don't mean to be disrespectful, but this is simply a CAM application. And discussions about whether it's buildable or not, I understand that there are important motion issues, but it's really not what's here tonight. I had this case recently, in fact, it's up on appeal, had this case in Madison where my client was trying to develop a piece of property and the neighbors complained that it was in a flood zone. And they've taken the case to the Superior Court. On the same town, same side as the town in that case. But with respect to the fact that this whole area might flood, I do call your attention and the public's attention to the fact that your zoning regulations have already embedded in them, specific regulations that govern building in a flood zone. So there's nothing intrinsically prohibited. It certainly risks when you go to a flood zone, different requirements in flood zones. But the fact that a particular piece of land floods would probably not be germane in a regular site plan, site plan application as long as you met the requirements. Here, what we have is, we have, aside from the fact that there are some nuanced differences between DEP and Mr. McGee, both of those experts, neither of those experts have raised issues relating to coastal resource issues. Your sanitarian has not raised any issues relating to coastal resources. Mr. Harkin, I believe is a respected engineer, he, together with staff and the state agencies, have provided what is substantial evidence. And that's really the test. I mean, is there substantial evidence to, you know, to support whatever decision you make? We're trying to put substantial evidence in front of you, but we could be here for a very long time. And I'm not going to sit here for a very long time, I'm on the clock. We could be here for a very long time, listening to the items that may take us beyond what's really in front of us tonight. So I'll be the bad guy for saying that.
Thank you. And that's true, but I also would like to at least let people know that their voices are heard.
Sure.
And if there are questions, they might ask a question that might actually go beyond what's on the paper. So if you don't mind, just spend another couple of minutes, sir. Keep it questions. Comments will come after, so they got to really be questions.
Good evening. John Conroy from 33 Decatur Avenue, which is, when you come to the area that we're talking about, you come down Decatur Avenue, loop around to Marshall Avenue Extension. Marshall Avenue, as you know, goes around Mulberry Point and comes back. Originally, that road was supposed to go through. So that is actually the pathway, the roadway to get to the beach. And when it rains, you get wet. So I would urge you gentlemen and ladies to come and take a look at this piece of property. Because if you're on the roadway to the beach, if you step off, it may not look like water there, but you go up over your ankles in no time. It's a very, very fragile area. You know, I knew Martha's grandfather, Norm Ferris. My father had a little house built on Decatur Avenue, 1932. And then he started building the house I'm living in now, 1936. And we were the last house. And over the years, things progressed around. When there was a hole in the road, we put stones in over it, made it smooth. So the, you know, right now, in all of Long Island Sound, if you ask any lobstermen, there's no lobsters out in the sound anymore. Why is that? A good deal of it is pollution from fertilizers and runoff. So I think Don has a very legitimate question about that possibility. I have nothing against Martha. I've known her a very long time. My granddaughters would play with her, mostly her granddaughter. So there's no animosity against her. This piece of property is very, very marginal. And if you have to hang the utilities and furnaces from the floor to make it pass, I think that is a bit of a situation. I would encourage you to come down and look at this piece of property. It is very, very low. I don't know where this 2.9 feet is, but I've been there quite a while. Thank you, room.
Thank you, sir. All right, another question?
No, not a question. My name is Ellen Bernstein, 138 Marshall Avenue. I'm on the southwest corner of Decatur and Marshall. Five points, not questions. My interest in all of this began in December 2012, when George Crowell, who is the town planner, was quoted in The Courier after the first meeting of the Coastal Resilience Plan. And his quote was, "The meeting was better than anything we've had before because people's consciousness about coastal resilience issues has obviously been raised as a result of the recent storm-related activities. There's been a ton of interest." Second thing, April 22nd this year, Adam Welshell from the Nature Conservancy said, "We all know this." It's just so simple, but it's kind of mind-boggling. "We need our wetlands for protection." The Nature Conservancy, along with Malone and McBrow Incorporated and the Yale Urban Ecology and Design Laboratory, were commissioned by the Town of Guilford to prepare in September 2012 and in July 2013. These two documents. This one right here was the one that was done, Town of Guilford Community Coastal Resilience Plan Risk and Vulnerability Assessment Report. I know you all know it. It was commissioned by the Town of Guilford. This is a September 2012. And this one, which I have just copied, is the July 2013 copy. In the first one, there are many, many pictures in color. This one is particularly of interest. This is Mulberry Point and Tullows Point. I don't know how I can put this so that you can see it better. You can't really. But if you, if I could pass this around, it would be useful. You certainly know about it. I'm not sure that all of us who need to know about it do. This is Mulberry Point and Tullows Point. This is a present-day category two storm flooding. This is 2020 daily inundation projected. 2020, we're 2014, we're halfway through 2014. This is daily inundation 2020, showing this whole area, this very, very fragile circle of land, this right here. And I can't tell you anything more excepting to say that we all know these things and we're very concerned. we're very concerned. We're very concerned. Um, there's also, the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection issued a titled Wetlands Buffer's Guidance Document. It's available at the library in Westbrook. Um, there are many, many other sources and books, titled Wetlands Primer. You, again, many of us know about these, many of us probably don't. Um, there's a lot of information on it, and what it comes down to is that this is buffer land. This is, this is, this is titled Wetlands Buffer Area. I moved in thirty-six years ago. When we moved in, which is right across the road, we made sure that this area, which is right above and inside the marsh, we made sure that it was not buildable land, and we were told it is not buildable land. And that is now the area that we're considering going ahead.
Thank you. One more. Go ahead.
Um, John Little, one seventy-five Marshall Avenue, and I have, fortunately, I'll be short. Here's the culvert that you mentioned that goes under the road, and that collects all the water from the watershed that's in that area. And that produces a little bit of a water course that goes directly across this property, and all of the, the plan seems to show that the culvert's there, it doesn't show what, how it's gonna, how it's gonna be handled. Now, just the question is, how are you gonna handle the water that comes from the watershed?
Are you speaking about the culvert that's, you know, seven hundred feet away, or the culvert that's right out in front of the property?
Uh, the one that's right at the corner of the Decatur Avenue and Marshall Avenue.
We're not even gonna touch it. There's no need for us to touch it. Currently, there's a catch basin that's right there, and that pipe culvert comes and heads right towards, uh, I believe, the Martha person's property. It's just sheet flow. When it rains, it just sheets flows down into that area. We won't be touching it at all. There's no need for us to touch it.
So that water goes right across that property?
It goes, it goes across properties, absolutely. Not just that one, but others.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just got one last quick question. Uh, Carol Keller, again, one, one thirty-nine Marshall Avenue. I know that this property upon which this building is proposed, as far as I know, the highest assessment value of that land has been like nineteen hundred and forty dollars. To me, that would indicate that the Town of Guilford never considered this as a building lot, because a building lot down by the shore in Mulberry Point is valued a lot higher than that. And I'm curious to know if the town indeed did not consider it a building lot for all these years and charged forty-eight dollars a year of taxes on it. Why all of a sudden would it be considered a building lot now?
I don't know. We have anyone here that can answer that. Um, something to consider. Um, we've covered a lot of questions, had a lot of comments. Unless there's something substantial, I'd like to continue moving on, if that's okay with everybody. Um, any other questions from members, staff? Got just about everything from everybody. So I think I'd like to move on to the next one, if that's okay. Um, so let's, let's close the pub.
Just a point of work, Attorney Tom Crammon. Are you gonna take comments in favor?
Uh, yeah.
People are gonna always confuse their process, but.
Okay. So we've had a lot of comments, but if someone, why don't we spend ten minutes, if we can, with anyone who wants to speak for it or against it? I know a lot of people wanna have comments. A lot of people have already made comments. So if someone hasn't made a comment yet but would like to share it, please, try and be brief, because we have a ton of things we need to cover tonight. So any comments for the applicant, or any against? One in the back.
Hi, Mary Alice Hogan, eleven Decatur Avenue. My family has owned this property since, uh, nineteen fifty-six. Um, we were always told that that was marshland, that it wasn't buildable, et cetera. But my concern is also along with Don Knapp's. The septic field, um, there, there is a property developed on Mulberry Point that received all the okays, and those septic fields have washed right out of Long Island Sound. So we're, we're concerned, young man. We're just very concerned. We're just, just, nothing against Martha, I've known her for years, but it's, we're literally about to.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're all set. Do we need to close the hearing on this one? Okay, so do we have a motion to close the hearing on Martha?
So moved.
All those in favor? All right, okay. How about we open Chris McManus? We have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor? Thanks. Okay.
Where's the chocolate today?
I'm a professional engineer and land surveyor. Office is at one forty-one Merron Road in Madison.
I was out of time. She has chocolate in the thing.
I'm here on behalf of Chris McManus, who is the owner, the epic builder.
Maybe we need it too.
Where's the Dunkin' Donuts?
Back there, yes, for chocolate.
The property is an R three zone.
Where's the box of joe?
And a dozen donuts.
Yeah, we're gonna need some.
It's located on the east side of Seaside Avenue.
We're gonna need something.
We're gonna be here until midnight.
It's the sixth property down from Mold Woodfield Street.
Thank you, everybody.
You're coming down Mold Woodfield to the sixth house on your left.
Do we have anyone presenting for Chris?
It's an existing house. The proposal is to demolish it, reconstruct it, and substantially the same footprint. We're gonna remove a bump out on the north side. We're not gonna replace that. We're going up with what's shaded on the site plan. I've colored this up just from my old eyes, just to have a sense of what the high tide
I, I, yeah, I'm sorry, you're right. He's stuck. Stuck in the back.
line is, but the plans on the easel are the same as the reduced plans that you folks have in front of you. The lot area is twenty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-four square feet. The required lot area is twenty thousand square feet. Existing three-bedroom house has a finished floor of six decimal six five. The proposed three-bedroom house has a finished floor of fifteen decimal eight five. The property is located in an A to twelve flood zone, and the flood zone line has a septic system. The, the higher flood zone toward the water is DE elevation thirteen. The house itself is in the A-zone. Even though it's in the A-zone, looking toward the future, it's being built to be some standards of finished floor being at fifteen eighty-five, the highest concrete would be fourteen eighty-five. So if a question's asked about freeboard, there's two point eight five, two foot, two foot, ten inches freeboard from the A-zone, and two feet less, one foot less rather, from the B-zone. Coastal resources, the tidal wetlands, which are shown in purple color, somewhat inside the, uh, what I've shown in green is the outline of the high tide line. I've shaded it in because in the spring, the spring tide tide, the annual high tide, this area will be flooded, including around the house, two or three times in the spring. And that elevation is four point two. So that's not a, it's not a, it's just a spring event, and stated earlier, the storms can get worse, and this is something you're gonna have every year. The finished floor of the storage area below the house is elevation four twenty-five, which is three inches above, or right about at the expected high tide in spring. The other coastal resources, the high tide line, the tidal wetlands, which were renovated by Richard Snarke, I think last fall. Uh, the other line we show here is CJL, which is the coastal jurisdiction line. Kevin McGee, John Goucher, Chris Romero, and I met, uh, March nineteenth of the spring. They're from the office line on Town Program. Because of the proximity of coastal resources, they required us to apply for a certificate of permission, which is known as the COP. Uh, that permission's granted in maybe twenty, maybe twenty and twenty-fourteen. I believe you have, have the COP file. We then took the COP approval. Reggie kinda helped us get the ducks in a row. He suggested we start with state, then go to the zoning board of appeals, then come to you this evening. The COP approval, we took from the zoning board of appeals, they approved, uh, our proposal, June twenty-fifth of this year. The only relief we needed from zoning was coastal resource setbacks. The house conforms with height, it conforms with location, bulk, coverage. It's just coastal resource, we're literally touching the house. Kevin McGee, over the last couple of days, has corresponded, we've had a via phone and email, he's had a punch list of comments. Uh, I'll just give you the punch list of comments that he, that he responded to. Shouldn't have a sentence with to, but he responded to the comments. And also, I'm aware he has a letter for the file, and once again, most of these comments reflect on the plans as they exist this evening. These two plans, if I forget, the coastal site plan and the sanitary design behind it, uh, because I've colored it out, just make sure I leave these two plans off the board as they exhibit for you this evening. Kevin requested that we expand the soil erosion control protection to protect all the disturbed areas. Typically, we'll show a sanitary design schematically on the coastal site plan. We don't typically go before high elevations for sanitary design approval, but because it dictates what coastal resources are gonna be protected, um, these plans have become a partnership, I think, for years, where you see. The second sheet in the act is the sanitary design, it's a more, it's a less user-friendly scale, it's a little bit busy, it's a very busy site, spot elevations and different resources. The short story is, it's gonna be a three-bedroom system designed for the health code standard. We're gonna have a temporary access easement on the lot to the south, which is, I believe, number eighty-four, eighty-six Seaside Avenue. And that'll be the construction of the septic system. We're gonna construct the septic system first, and bring the pressure line back to the pump pit location. This'll all be stabilized, seated. There'll be no reason to go back there. That'll be growing all the houses that you've built. The view lane selected is the north, a side area, the twelve-foot view lane is a note to that effect. The, we're landing to the house, we, we've added three steps to the house. So John Goucher, with the name, the name you've had before you this evening, with a pollist, sent out a brochure to Kevin, which he shared with me yesterday. They talk about access to electric panels. So we revised the landing area so someone could come up with access to the electric panel, which will, our electric meter, which should be on the front of the house. We have a processed stone driveway area, which turns out, well, you know it, but I, it's a discovery to me, that's considered as impervious, uh, from a town's point of view. So we've replaced that with a, I'm gonna flip it back and forth, but makes it easier for me. It's a gravel paved driveway, which is, it's porous stone, it's held, a plastic containment system is built up over gradations of stone and gravel to purify that water that goes into the groundwater table. That's shown here in front of the house. We're not using underneath the house for a garage. It'll just be stored. The open, the waterside end of the garage is being left open. It's shown on the architectural plans, that's to conform with the A-zone requirements for flood, for flood protection. Construction sequences have been added to the plan. The sequence details that we're gonna stake this out, we're gonna protect the soil erosion control. We're gonna remove topsoil, stockpile it behind silt fence. We're gonna take subsoil that's inaccessible, we need stockpile it behind, on silt fence. State hay bales. Gene Goucher didn't want silt fence, because to install that directly, you dig it in, he didn't want to let dig in half and chase it to the tidal wetlands, so we're gonna need to stake hay bales. The select bill will be brought in, the system will be installed, the pressure line will be laid back to the pump pit location. This'll all be topsoil, seated, mulched, buttoned up, into the house construction. The existing house is nine hundred ninety-five square feet. The new house is gonna be nine hundred and ten square feet. The height of the house will be thirty-five, which is the maximum lab in its own. I'm at the end of my calendar. It's really, it's fairly simple, but we're really, another house, new house in the same location.
Tell us the current.
I don't know. I guess it's maybe twenty feet above the ground, the ground's maybe twenty.
You're adding an additional floor.
In fact, we're starting that floor with fifteen versus six point six five. So we're up for nineteen higher. We're higher than we need to be to provide the flood, we're looking to the future, we want headroom underneath, we don't wanna, we don't wanna make it tight.
And you're concerned that eventually this will become a B-zone instead of your, but right now, you're only required to build to A.
To A twelve zone, that's right. I'm not smart enough to predict, you know, I, I think we all know it's, it's coming up slightly. I, I'll say I doubt it's gonna be a B-zone, but I'll, I'll sleep. I'll sleep with a floor, I'll sleep whatever the height.
Gentlemen?
I'll read some letters.
Yeah, I'll read a letter from, uh, to Guilford planning zoning, from Kevin McGee, dated August fifth. Um, the information provided indicates that the existing three-bedroom house will, will be removed, and a new three-bedroom house driveway and septic system will be installed. The driveway is proposed to be constructed utilizing gravel pave, a permeable driveway product. This site is a difficult property to construct due to the close proximity of the tidal wetland, wetlands line and the coastal jurisdiction line. The construction of the house is below coastal jurisdiction line and AVD elevation four point oh, which required the applicant to receive a certification of authority from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. The proposed septic system is located in the area that is subject to flooding in severe storms and may be affected by sea level rise in the future. The bottom of the proposed septic is set at elevation four point two and AVD point two feet above the highest predicted tide. As noted on the plan, if the former standards of high tide lines, HTL, were in effect, a portion of the, uh, were in effect, a portion of the septic system would have been in the tidal zone. In addition, a portion of the septic system is located in a FEMA wave velocity zone and is subject to erosion from coastal storm. The general sequence of construction as shown on the plan provides for erosion and sedimentation control measures that are designed to protect the adjacent coastal resources during the construction processes. In, in order to make sure the coastal resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. The Town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any demolition or site regrading. Soil stockpiles should be contained by hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be backed by orange construction, fencing, and be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement. Two, a note should be placed on the coastal area, area management plan indicating the north side of the property that will be maintained for view access. Three, the septic system be protected with geotextile fabric anchored in accordance to manufacturer specifications. Four, the storage and staging area shall be located outside the tidal wetlands and above the coastal jurisdiction line, as shown on the coastal site plan. Five, except that specifically shown on the approved plans, no equipment or material, including but not limited to, fill, construction materials, excavated materials, or debris shall be disposed, placed, or stored in any wetlands on or off-site, nor shall any wetlands be used as a storage area or. portion of the, were in effect, a portion of the septic system would have been in the tidal zone. In addition, a portion of the septic system is located in a FEMA wave velocity zone and is subject to erosion from coastal storm. The general sequence of construction as shown on the plan provides for erosion and sedimentation control measures that are designed to protect the adjacent coastal resources during the construction processes. In order to make sure the coastal resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. The town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any demolition or site regrading. Soil stockpiles should be contained by hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be backed by orange construction fencing and be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement. Two, a note should be placed on the coastal area management plan indicating the north side of the property that will be maintained for view access. Three, the septic system be protected with geotextile fabric anchored in accordance to manufacturer specifications. Four, the storage and staging area shall be located outside the tidal wetlands and above the coastal jurisdiction line as shown on the coastal site plan. Five, except that specifically shown on the approved plans, no equipment or material, including but not limited to fill, construction materials, excavated materials, or debris shall be disposed, placed, or stored in any wetlands on or off-site, nor shall any wetlands be used as a storage area or accessway. Six, a licensed surveyor shall make, shall stake out the location of the house, septic system, pressure lines, leaching fields, and limits of grading prior to any site construction.
Thanks, Josh.
Okay. There's another letter.
Looks like we have more.
Yep. This is one is from Dennis Johnson, to planning and zoning, dated August 5th. From, here, our soil tests conducted on the applicant's proposed lot on September 9, 2013, revealed suitable conditions for construction of an onsite three-bedroom septic system. The pressure, the presence of an elevated water table and limited site area will require submission of an engineered design septic system. Based upon soil test results and site plan review, it is recommended that the applicant's proposed site plan and house reconstruction be approved.
That's wonderful. All right, so, wait, there's more?
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. There we go. I started this one earlier. So this one is from John Goucher, dated July 31st. It's to Kevin McGee. So number 78, Seaside Ave. We have reviewed this proposal for consistency with Connecticut Coastal Management Act policies and have no comment for the Planning and Zoning Commission consideration. And that's that.
Wonderful. Is that everything?
I believe so.
Great. So do we have any questions? Reggie?
No, none for us.
Tom?
Pretty straightforward.
Frank?
Straightforward.
Walter? I don't have any other questions. The members of our guests have any questions? Any comments? Tom? There you go.
Yes, this is 250 Flag Marshall. I had a few questions I was going to ask, but I'll get a quick cut to the chase. George, as the leader of the current resilience study, what would you estimate the expiry date is on the usefulness of this proposed application as a residential structure?
I don't have a, I don't have an answer to that question.
What does the resilience plans that was presented in July 2013 suggest?
Specifically about this property?
About that area of which this property is a piece.
It suggests that it's a vulnerable area to future sea level rise.
Like, got to be underwater.
Correct.
Okay, based on projections?
I'm not talking about specifically this property, but the area in general.
The area in general. Nothing to prejudice this property in particular, but recognizing that this property exists in a context. If that context is threatening, to put it mildly, given the recent reports by NOAA on projections for sea level rise, given the fact that the U.S. Navy is buying on to three feet by the end of the century, given the fact that the U.S. Geodetic Survey suggests that the east coast, of which we are a part, will experience one foot higher than global projections for sea level rise, and most authorities seem to put global sea level rise by end of the century between three feet and four feet for the globe as a whole. Divide that by two, and easily, Seaside Avenue will regularly flood, if not flood daily, by around 2050, with progression leading up to that. It does now, when we have seasonal high tides in the spring and the autumn. They differ with the expert here, but they occur now three days a month, six months a year, the spring and the autumn, when current seasonal high tides are one foot above annual average. So if in 20 years, we add one foot of sea level rise according to current projections, then the useful life of that house and many others on that street will be compromised. Are you aware of the projections that face this property that we're planning to build?
I, not specifically, no. Any, any research I've done online relative to sea level rising, there's no common line. They talk about not only sea level rise, they talk about plate shifts, they talk about stuff.
That's right.
So I can't say I've read about a two-inch or two-foot, no.
But you recognize that there is a wide range of potential within which occurs?
In the upward direction.
And we have a situation now that suggests what might be in the future, given what is today.
I understand their documents out, I'm not familiar with any of them specifically.
I'll save my comments for the comments section.
Thank you. Almost there. Any other questions?
I have one question. Is there currently a septic system on the property?
No, it's been removed.
What, there was a septic, what's there now?
There's no septic. The septic actually was off the property, on the adjacent property. The septic to this house, so there's nothing there.
So right now, is there a septic on the adjacent property?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so there is a septic present right now there, correct? Not on the property, but for the property?
No, there is not.
So what do they have there for, or is it not?
With empty house.
It's not occupied.
An empty house.
But before, when it was occupied?
It was accessible. Which would have been, by definition, most likely down in the groundwater pavement.
Okay. And the septic system that's going to be in place is way better than?
This is code complying, current health code will be a foot and a half, the bottom of the system will be a foot and a half above the groundwater.
Can I, let me comment on the, a little bit on the question that Sid Gale asked regarding coastal resilience plan, which I think the commission is somewhat familiar with. The coastal resilience plan is a draft document currently. It does not, it's not approved by the, by the town. As Sid knows, the draft plan has been finalized virtually basically today and will be tomorrow. It will be officially transmitted to the Board of Selectmen and the Planning and Zoning Commission first of next week. And we'll be asking that the coastal resilience plan be approved as part of the Plan of Conservation and Development. And we'll be asking you to set a public hearing in October. The coastal, the Plan of Conservation and Development law requires that we notify the Board of Selectmen at least 65 days prior to any public hearing we have, which is the reason why we're hoping to have a public hearing in October. So in October, we'll have a public hearing on the coastal resilience plan. This will be hopefully a joint hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Selectmen. Hopefully sometime after that, both the Board of Selectmen and the Planning and Zoning Commission will approve it, and it will become official policy of the town. What has to happen after that is whatever recommendations are contained in the plan that might be relevant have to be translated to regulatory changes, either zoning changes or other town ordinances or codes, so that there's a whole process associated with that in terms of drafting the regulations, public hearings to consider the regulations, and adopting or approving the regulations. So right now, the plan, as Sid correctly said, is a draft document. It's something that we've been working on for a few years, but it does not have any official status in terms of the big policy of the town.
Okay, thank you. Got John?
John Rocchio, 90, Seaside, two properties south of this property. I couldn't quite see the site plan, but I just want to confirm, I understand it. There's no fill going on the site, so any site drainage or whatever will remain on-site as is now?
That's not correct. There will be fill going over the septic system. There will not be fill done around the house.
Okay, then I did misunderstand. I thought the leach, the leach field's on the adjacent property?
No, the leaching, it was assessed pool on the adjacent property. This is going to have a system on its own property. The bottom of the system will be roughly at grade. The system's about 12 inches in height with another six inches, so about 18 inches of fill over the system area.
Okay. And then the, that's, and then the drainage from that will sheet off onto the existing property?
It'll sheet off as it does now, and actually it's just going to go into the tidal wetlands eventually. It won't go off the property.
And there's no other fill other than the driveway?
The driveway, as we said, at grade, is slight fill, yes.
Okay. All right, now, all right, that's it. I just wanted to confirm, couldn't quite see where you pointed everything there.
John, do you, do you retain any concerns based on those answers with the?
Well, I had concerns that we're also a low property there on the, on that street, and just for any runoff, and the blocks on that street are being elevated, a lot of them are being elevated, and any runoff or whatever, we're just looking not to have more runoff kind of heading our direction if possible.
Good.
So that was a comment, and it looks like that's not going to be the situation.
It'll grow adjacent tidal wetlands.
Thank you, John. Any other questions? All right. Comments for? Go ahead, John.
So I understand the concerns about sea level rise and whatever. There's an existing structure there. Mr. McManus builds beautiful houses and does a tremendous job. Whatever he does there is going to be a massive improvement over what's there right now. Whether it washes away in five or 10 years along my house is kind of a moot point. It'll be a tremendous improvement to the neighborhood and to the community, whatever he puts there, in my opinion. So I guess I give a favorable comment. Like I said, we only wash away in five years, so it'd be us in Manhattan and Florida and two other places in the neighborhood.
Great. We may still have time to save you all.
I need that in 20 years.
Okay, anyone else for? Anyone else against?
Why not?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I personally wish that I had enough resources that I could pour them into the water and walk away feeling good in five or 10 years, but that's not my circumstance. And I think my concern is that for us to approve projects like this in areas like Seaside Avenue, which were even more vulnerable than Marshall Avenue, and there was plenty concern addressed earlier on that project, I think we have to rethink how we're going about this. We have to recognize that the code that you're looking to for adequacy of your judgments is inadequate. FEMA standards for flood, raising properties for flood are based on historical data. They are not based on elevations needed for B-zones in future with sea level rise. So that if we have sea level rise of one foot, presumably protection of one to two feet will not be adequate in many areas. And that will vary from area to area. And FEMA does not currently take into account sea level rise that will ultimately inundate properties and their connecting infrastructure on a regular basis, which is quite likely the case for Seaside Avenue at some point in time, maybe 20 years, maybe 50 years, but probably not much longer than 50 years, based on what science is telling us is most probable at this point in time. So sitting where you are, I think it's a mistake to look for comfort in codes that are based on historical data when we are leaving history. And it's your job more to think about what's coming in the future and what we can do that is least detrimental to the property owners whose interests you are here to protect and to the community at large whose interests you are here to protect. Because as much, the more that we continue to add value to these vulnerable areas, the more we dig a hole, not only for the property owners, but for the town as a whole and its tax base and its supportive unsustainable infrastructure to support these new properties. Now, I know that the applicant built one FEMA high-rise two years ago, or one year ago, actually. This is the second. The third is probably due to come along. How much more money do, how much more investment do we want to put into these vulnerable areas? I fully understand the concerns of people who have lived here, who have invested here before this evening became an issue, and now they're raising their properties as a desperate hope to make them as usable and safe as possible for as long as they may be able to remain. That's fully understandable. But I think we're utterly foolish to do what we're doing with this application, the one that preceded it, the one that's likely to follow. If we're going to do that, and I fully expect that you will, I would urge that at very minimum, you put on the property record the statement that this property and its adjoining area is subject to considerable risk of sea level rise and inundation at some point and increased storm activity leading up to that point. And you can cite the scientific and governmental sources that are there to support that statement. In doing that, you at least put anyone who's going to buy this property and any others like it on notice as to what they're getting into. If they choose to do that, that's their free will, but they are informed. And as we all know, a fair market is supposed to operate on the basis that all parties have the benefit of the same information. The town of Guilford certainly has this information now, largely as a result of the resilience study and others that came before it. One of my concerns is that the resilience study may wind up in the same place that the CAM study did before. An excellent study that identified many risks that are evolving now, but nothing substantive has come about it since 2007 in terms of regulation. Trivial issues, relatively speaking, cause medications were addressed, but not the substantive ones. And I suspect that that's the attitude that still exists here today. And I think it does a disservice to the community as a whole and to people who may come into our area by these properties assume that their interests have been adequately protected through regulation. Code as it exists today is nothing but a borderline between stupidity and prudence. It describes the minimum that we must do. It doesn't describe what we prudently should do above and beyond in circumstances such as Seaside Avenue that demand a little bit more forethought and future thought than we've been inclined to give so far. Thank you for considering these comments.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else against? Last call. All right, can I get a motion to close public hearing?
I'll move.
Who was in favor? We have another one. Can I have a motion to open a public hearing? Thank you.
Can we get these two pulled out?
Thanks so much. Guilford Better Chance to Make a Motion to Open Public Hearing. Leader?
Hi.
Do we have a presenter for Guilford, a Better Chance?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
I'm happy to say that Guilford ABC House is long away from the shore, so we're not dealing with that problem. My name is Barbara Pine, and I'm president of the board of ABC. It's an all-volunteer board. And we operate the Guilford Better Chance program for young women who come to Guilford and go to school and have a chance to apply to a really good college, have a good high school education, apply to a good college. We're sending two seniors off to college this fall. We have six girls in the house. The house is located at 143 Church Street. That's just across from the driveway, the back driveway of CBS, so you probably know where it is. We desire to build a deck in the side yard set back from the street, 10 by 24. And we're here to ask, one here, to ask for a special permit, I believe it is, thank you, Reggie, for excessive coverage. Our house is in the village dump, it's an older home. We, the program owns the house, and we, we would be exceeding with that deck the 15% lot coverage that is currently required in our zone, which is R1. So we're asking for your approval of that request. We would like to build the deck. We would have built a patio, which wouldn't have necessitated our coming here and asking for this special permit, but the person that's helping us design our garden and improve our outdoor space said that, suggested that we not go with a patio because it would require maintenance that we're really, as a volunteer board, not that able to, to do. Instead, we'd like to build an on-ground, not attached, 14 by 24 deck out of tracks, and we're going to put a little fence around it. We'd like the outdoor space for our girls. Most of them come from the city. They don't have a yard. Our yard is a break, but the front porch is the only outdoor space we have, but it's right on the road. And if you try to sit in the chairs that we have there, you're just bombarded by truck noise, and it's not very private, whereas our side and backyard are much more private, and we give them a chance for outdoor space as well as our resident staff. So that's what I'm here to ask.
If the deck is built, what would the lot coverage be then?
22.
Okay, so you want to go from 15 to 22?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And how big did you say the deck was going to begin?
14 by 24 feet. And as I said, ground level.
No, just Reggie, are you, have you got any comments about this?
No, you know, 273-37 allows in, in this R1 and R2 zone. No. You know, 273-37 allows in this R1 and R2 zone district additional lot coverage up to, I think it was 10 or 15% for decks.
Okay.
So, but you have to get a special permit to do it. And that's why they're here.
Okay.
We're not putting up against a need for a variance anyway.
No, no, no. It's a provision in your zoning regulation.
Done? Done? Done?
Two seventy-three.
Move to close the public hearing.
Sorry, Paul, wait a minute. Don't we have to ask if anybody has questions?
Oh, yeah. Any, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions? Walter? No, I'm sorry, Victor.
Victor, an option 2614, Boston Coast Road. I have a question. A deck, this is going to be how many inches off the ground?
Well, it's going to...
Is it less than 18 inches?
Yes.
Isn't it true that that's not considered coverage? There's no cover on the deck? There's no roof on the deck?
No.
Wouldn't that fall in the same category as a patio?
No.
So it's less than 18 inches?
No, because it's a deck, and you can get the extra lot coverage with 273-37.
Have to be pavers, gravel, stamped concrete?
Right.
Then it would not...
That wouldn't be considered.
Right, that wouldn't be considered.
But wood on grade, would it be considered coverage?
Yes.
Seems a little odd, if something...
Don't know. Is that good?
I'm in favor of it. I'm in favor of it. I just have a question.
All right. Any other questions? Any comments for or against? Okay, Walter.
Sorry for jumping the gun like that. I had a small report here for some other things. Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Who's in favor?
Hi.
Gary's. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service, too. Okay, can I get a motion to open the Patel application?
It's a move.
Second. Who's in favor?
Hi.
All right. Who is going to present this?
Hi, how are you? My name is Ken Patel. I'm actually representing Wine Empire. That will try to open this exhibit A. This is just our business plan. Should we put up stores just not going to be your normal wine liquor store, especially have different aspects of it, going from website delivery, social media. We're going to have two different wine tasting rooms. And it's going to be a, we actually have another store that's in Orange. It's about a 7,000 square foot store. And we do a lot, going from yacht clubs to maybe home courses. We do a lot of charity events. My office is right up the street in Branford. We actually have the Holiday Express there, too. And we know this area very, very well. Initially, we were going to buy this place, what was called Sam's Wine World. And that was right across the street where we're going to put this place right now. And I want to bring this as, this is, let's pull it up. This is actually exhibit B. This was a lease assignment back of September 2013 with WW Post. And that was, that document was sent up to Department of Consumer Protection, Liquor Control. They had that document, actually, the landlord, that WW Post, advised that we forced a document. He wanted somebody that of his party to get the store because the person we were buying it from just left the store. Nobody knows where he is. So initially, we had to deal with the landlord. We've been trying to come with a agreement with dollar amounts. We did come to an agreement about it two and a half months ago. A meeting was set up with Liquor Control's agent team and the landlord. And the landlord member showed up. Obviously, the state wasn't too happy about that. So, you know, we had to take another step. And, I mean, thank God, we found a place right across the street. So, and it's a great landlord, you know, good friend that we know for a while. And, I mean, here we are. And all we wanted to do is just open the store, you know, and that's all the state wants us to do. And that's all we're asking. You know, we're just trying to get the store open. You know, the landlord's actually going to make this. I mean, it's going to look really nice. I mean, if you've seen our Holiday Express in Branford, you'll know, we don't put up anything that's not nice, you know? And that's all we're trying to do. We were trying to come, we were even willing to give the previous landlord money for a business that's not even his. But unfortunately, what we were going to pay for, we were willing to give it to him, but he wanted back rent and other things involved. And here's, this is actually exhibit C. This is an email from the previous landlord to us acknowledging that the deal is moving forward, it's approved, everything's ready to go. I mean, here we are, 12 months later. We signed on for this August 2013. And all we were willing to do is get this place opened up. And we were just kept getting the runarounds from the landlord himself, his attorneys. You know, when he missed a meeting, his attorney told the agent that, you know, I'm not going to represent him anymore. And, you know, just a lot of stuff that we don't like to get ourselves involved. All we wanted just to get the place open, you know, start whatever we had in our mind that located it to Guilford. And we know a lot of my I T officer in Guilford. He's the one who told me, this place is next to ours in Orange. And he's like, you should bring your business model to Guilford. And I said, you know, we started looking July of last year, and unfortunately, we found this place. And we had negotiations, deal ready, closing table, and the closing never happened. So, you know, we just want this to just get moving forward. We have, we're trying to get this open by the 6th of September. So, not a lot of room.
Well, my first question would be, I know, unless I missed it, there's X amount of liquor licenses allowed per town, correct?
Right. We own this license right now.
Which license is it? Is it that Sam, the former Sam's license is what you own?
Yeah, the state has a license now. License lapsed. So what that means about, I think those few months ago, I don't know the exact date, the landlord was in charge of the license. And then the license went back to the state. Once somebody leaves and abandons a property, the landlord's in charge of the license. And he didn't want to honor our lease that he signed a while ago, just because he wanted the money we were going to give to Sam's Wine World. And that was a lot of money. And what happened is, we did come to an agreement to give him the money. And he never showed up for the meeting. He got everybody ticked off. And, you know, there was...
But in short, you have the license to do this.
Yes, we do.
You are licensed, you are...
Yeah, we can prove it. We're number one in line. There's two people. It's us being number one, and the landlord has a family member that he kind of did it on the backtrack. When he signed a lease, a month later, he had his family member, he signed another lease with his family member, and put the application up at the Liquor Control.
Well, let me just ask this. I mean, this is a land use commission, not the Liquor Control Board. So...
Right.
All you're asking for is a special permit at this new location...
That's all.
...to open a liquor store.
That's it.
And if you get the license from the state, great. If you don't, you won't be able to...
The license was approved.
Well, I understand that. But I'm just saying, so all you're really asking this board to do is to...
Is just approve a special permit.
...grant you a special permit so you can open your business there.
That is correct.
Which you will not be able to open until you officially get it.
Unless we get the approval from the planning...
Okay. And if you don't get it, it's really irrelevant, all the...
Right. All the other is just nothing in regardless of the...
So, trying to cut to the chase here is what we're being asked for.
So, look, can I, are we, questions here? Let me ask the question. There's two motions here. One for approval, possible approval, and one for denial. And the one that's denial, that's a denial is based on the fact that there's another used, such used within 1,500 feet of proposed location, which is clearly in our regulations. There cannot be two liquor stores within 1,500 feet of each other. Is the issue here the conflict between the old, the store that was there that's had a license that now doesn't have a license? Or is there actually another liquor store within 1,500 feet?
Well, that's a question for you to interpret, what your regulations mean. As has been stated, this is an application for a special permit to locate the liquor store at the Canestry property. What you have to determine is whether or not that application meets three standards. The first one is that it, if it's within, it cannot be approved if it's within a radius of 1,500 feet of any other building or land used for a retail package store. So, the property across the street, almost across the street, is, the question is, is there a retail package store there? Is that property being used for a retail package store? It's clearly not a store that's open and operating. So, it would appear that...
And that store is the number two on the list?
Well, that's according to, according to Mr. Patel, it is. I don't, I was not able to get any, any kind of answer from, I tried to talk to the Department of Consumer Affairs today about this, and I couldn't really get an answer.
But that's not really...
But the question is not really relevant. The question is, is this proposed application, does it comply with your regulations? The other criteria, it can't be with any, any closer than 500 feet to school, college, convent, church. I don't think it meets any, I don't think that's at issue. And it has to be within one of the zones in which this use is allowed. TS2 is one of those zones, and therefore it meets that criteria. So the only question really is, is there another store within a retail package store within 1,500 feet of this proposed use?
So is a store that's closed, that doesn't have liquor license right now?
I don't know whether it has a liquor license or not.
Oh, okay. All right. So a store that's closed, that's not in operation, is there liquor in it?
I don't know.
Does that matter?
I can actually, if I may interrupt. That store's been closed since August of 2013. And all the inventory that is in there, whoever does assume it, if they do assume it back to that location, they will have to give that inventory back to the state. That inventory actually belongs to vendors. So, no, there isn't, because the state actually has a license or there is a store there or across the street. But there's two applications. And they honor the first application for a whole year. And the first application is us.
Right. So we have to decide whether we think that that thing is a liquor store or not.
Can they open up? Well, they could open up. Let's say that...
As far as we're concerned, that location was previously approved. So, that, they could open a liquor store there.
So let's say that there happens to be, the state said, okay, we actually have two spots, two...
Right. And you were to approve this one? And then, if somebody comes along and wants to open that one, what happens? I don't know.
Well, hypothetically, let's say someone else gives up their liquor license in Guilford, so now two are available. And we've approved this as a liquor store, and that already has an approval.
Yeah.
It's the distance, it's the issue is the distance.
But by that point, you will already, this will probably already have been done. So it'll be a water over the dam, but...
If I may just have one more thing. The state only allows one license in Guilford left.
But someone else could close their store, and there would be another one become available.
Well, they would have to buy their business. They can't just have another license.
But that could possibly happen.
Yes.
So...
But you have to be, I'm sure, where town limits is to, you have to be 1,500 store feet from another liquor store.
Well, George, let me...
Linear feet.
Let me ask this. If that store closes, does that special permit lapse, or does the special permit run with the land?
Most special, normally, special permit runs with the land.
I thought it just was for the tenant.
I don't know. That's a good question.
Depends if it was filed on the land record, right?
If it was filed, a special permit normally is granted to the property owner.
So for planning and zoning purposes, that...
And that would presumably be the case here, too.
For planning and zoning purposes, that still carries a special permit. That's the liquor store, as far as planning and zoning.
As far as I know. I don't, I mean, I don't know any, I don't know whether it would automatically, the special permit would cease to be valid if the store closes. Never confronted that question before.
I think maybe what we would want to do is check this out a little further, because, for example, if they lost their license to sell liquor there, it's not a permitted use anymore, and perhaps that special permit does lapse. But I see the concern here. What could happen is, we could grant this. This guy could get his license. And then another store could close. Somebody could buy that business, and then now...
That has a special permit.
...open right next door because it's a special permit. We got two within, what, 500 feet of each other, or whatever the regulation is.
So potentially...
Well, look, correct me if I'm wrong, okay?
Yeah. With that, if somebody else closes store, let's say downtown Guilford, and they move, they want to move across us, it won't be allowed.
Why is that?
Because you have to be 1,500 square feet from another liquor store.
Linear feet.
Yes.
But we're saying that that Sam's liquor store right now has this permit. No, they don't. No, they have, they have the special permit to be a liquor store from the town.
But they don't have a state liquor license.
No, they don't have a state liquor license.
We don't know what they have. But, but my concern is that, does that one lapse? If they lose the liquor permit and it lapses, then I have no problem granting this application.
No, I wouldn't think that's what we should do.
Right.
Yeah. And maybe we could put a condition in like that. I don't know. But then the concern is, is that if it hasn't lapsed, and somebody buys a license and moves in, now you've got something that's in conflict with the regulations. I don't know the answer. I think it needs to be researched.
I'm sorry.
Rescind it? I suppose we could. I don't know. I've never, the other, I guess another, I mean, a couple of other things occurred to me. One of which, I can hear the question already, why should we incur legal expense to try to resolve this issue? But the problem, that these guys, that these guys find it out before the Liquor Control Commission. And the other is, so what if there's one 1,500 feet away, less than 1,500 feet from the other one? What difference does it make to us? Doesn't conform to the zoning regulations, I know. But we've done the best thing we can to ensure that we fly and...
Well, have we done the best thing we can do? We don't know, really, the status of that store, other than we've been told it's closed.
Well, no, we know that it's closed.
It's closed.
There's no question about that.
So if we know that it's closed, and we feel comfortable saying that, that if this one can open because there's no other liquor store within 1,500 feet, and then that reopens, we've kind of been...
Right. Well, one of the things that would have to happen before it reopens, I think, under, if it's under new ownership, is that they would have to come and get either Reggie or I to sign the liquor license, the liquor permit. And maybe, we might be, we might say, no, we're not going to sign that. We just approved one across the street. So whichever one comes in first for us to sign, would be the one we would sign, and the other one we would refuse to.
That's, that's a terrible position to be in.
Wait, you're not going to be in that position, because there's only going to be one license that's granted.
Is there anyone to represent the interests of the other side of the street?
Well, this is a letter.
I think it may be someone here.
Oh, we have a letter?
We have a letter. Would you like me to read the letter first?
Sure. Let's, let's read that letter.
All right. This is to the Guilford Planning and Zoning, from James McCann. Okay, I'm going to read this.
Commissioner, I'd say to read the letter, I could do it in person.
That's fine.
I would like to, with the time...
That's, that's fine.
Just to agree, like...
You go. You go ahead. If you don't mind, if you... So we're not going to read this?
The time is proper.
It's, it's always the right time to get information.
For the right to turn to Jim McCann from Wannecro County. I represent WW Postal Landlord and the Antonio Zerisini, the back, and Mr. Palumbo, the applicant for a permit. Just to clear something up, I cannot speak directly to Mr. Patel. He's represented by counsel. That would probably be a little of ethics. So therefore, if I may, through the chairman of the commission, I could speaker ask questions. First of all, I want to say this. I mean, if we were in Disney World, Mr. Patel's nose would be a little longer. He does not have the permit. He does not have the permit. I spoke with Liquor Control today. There are two applications in, they're vying for it. There is one permit left in Guilford. Okay? I'm not that familiar with Guilford as such. I drive through here on occasion. And I guess, Guilford has a lot of package stores. I guess like Sammy Davis Jr., the last thing he needs is another glass eye, a welcome. But there are, there are a lot of... In addition, there is a Superior Court matter pending in the Judicial District of Milford. It's a declaratory action, which we're going to judgment next week to validate his, Mr. Patel's lease. So Liquor Patrol has not decided who's going to get the permit. I will tell you that. They have not decided. All right? And I believe right now it's in your legal department. Okay? I contacted the director, Lisa Nahas, which I used to work for, Liquor Control, Superior Protection. I was very often with them some time back. And as far as the permit goes, he has enough. All right? He has enough. So if he's coming to represent to this commission, he hasn't, it's, it's, it's a false, it's a false. He hasn't at this point in time. However, I think the purview of the commission is to decide if it's, if the application is for TS2 zoning, which allows retail package stores. And if we look at it, one thing that I will say, read this, if I take it, I think it's Article 12, 273-86, one thing it does say, it doesn't say shall, but it says a special permit from this commission shall be required. permit from this commission shall be required even before the application is presented to Liquor Control, Consumer Protection. That's what it says. So, it seems like Mr. Patel has put the cart before the horse here in this aspect. In addition, now, there's different ways to reading statutes, there's different ways to reading regulations and things. I tend to read it most favorably to my client for the reason I read the bias in that aspect. However, it says within a radius of 1,500 feet of any other building or land used for a retail package store. It doesn't say existing. It says used. Now, if the commission, sometimes it's better to err on the side of caution. There, nobody's been granted permit yet. It's been a battle for a good portion of the year. I heard Mr. Patel's representations about him being quoted. I don't want to use the quotism, think around this by any of your lawyer, which I am here. Okay, and I, I, I'm out here to cast discursions. However, the issue is, before you, is that, is it allowed? Yes, it's allowed. Okay, a package store is allowed in TS2. It's plain reading. However, is it suitable? Okay? And it's allowed on its face, but is it suitable number one? And there's a little ambiguity. I don't see a 1,500, I think it's approximately, it's under 1,000 feet, it's across the street, of it's used as a retail package store. It doesn't say existing. Okay, it doesn't say. Maybe it's implied that it'd be existing or not. But however, there are two applications before the Liquor Control Commission, Consumer Protection. Now, it has been decided that location has been used as a package store for many years that it has. Hence, no special permit was needed. So, therefore, by client made application, he followed your statute. He followed your regulation because he really didn't need the special permit. All he needed was the permit to open up his store. Mr. Patel, with this application, is not following your procedure because he applied first and then sought permission here. Just a point of order if you're reading, reading, reading of your regulation. So, I mean, we're opposing it obviously because we intend to open up across the street. Very simple. And that's, that's the premises, that 2311 laws of the postal law. But nobody can open up until Liquor Control grants a permit. There's only one permit left in the town of Guilford, at least until the next census because it goes by population. So, I don't know, the next census is another seven years, five years, so maybe more package stores at this time, who knows? However, by, use the word precaution, maybe allocating a special permits to a location where, which may run with the land, run with the building. You guys are going to have a lot of package stores now, actually, it's a possibility. So, that may be foreseeable if we all had the proof, you know. However, I'd ask that to be denied at this point of the table until there's a point where it's good for Liquor Control. I think that's a decisive, I'm sorry?
You mentioned that he has none at this time. He had mentioned that he's first on the list ahead-
He had his application before my client. Yes, he did.
So, you mentioned he has none. That's accurate. But he's also ahead on the list before the Liquor Control Board at this time.
From my understanding, is that he applied before my client. That is a fact. His application went first and his application was for 2311. All right? He's applying for a special permit for 2347, if I'm correct.
So, he's ahead of your client at this time?
He, at this point in time. But Liquor Control has not decided. Just because they may not, they may not get to my client, they may get to a third party. All right, there's other issues involved and I don't want to get into here.
In terms of the, we were discussing a nonconforming use across the street. Because it's been, in effect, it was being used as a liquor store for so long that it didn't have to meet our, our current regime.
You mean, you're talking about it was grandfathered in?
Yes, it was grandfathered in.
Yes.
He's the parent of that liquor store. And that was a, was that a nonconforming use?
I don't know. I don't think it's nonconform use because that is owned also as TS, uh, TS2.
I think there, I think there probably was a special permit issued for that liquor store.
Well, we should look at that, George, because if it was grandfathered in, doesn't that use get extinguished when the use is no longer is, is used as that purpose?
Not deforming use.
Right. It's not deforming at the time.
Is that use continuing right now? I guess I don't know.
Well, the exact wording of the law, counsel is correct, is that the property is used or was used. Because it says used-
Our regulations say other building or land used for a retail package store.
So, is that the word is or was?
It doesn't have my authority.
It doesn't say is or was.
So, it was used, it could be an interpretation or is used.
We have to review this.
We really-
It'd be a lot easier if they would give a license to somebody.
To one or the other. But, you know, our, our rules, you know, it's up to attention to that wording. And the wording says property used as a liquor store. It was used as a liquor store.
But it, well, but it may not be one now if it was grandfathered in and the use is ended in general, nonconforming uses go away. So, I don't know whether that, I don't think we have enough information tonight before us to-
Nonconforming uses go, go away when there, when there's express intent on the part of the property owner to make them go away. So, they could probably argue that, no, we were trying to get a license here or something.
But if they don't get the license, it's on.
If you don't mind, just one, this is a consideration. This is the last thing I'm telling you. This is from Mr. McCann to Liquor Control Commissioner. And he stated the same thing. He's just stating now, we made quite big attempts to move in there for about 10 months. And that letter is stated to Mr. Scully. He's the commissioner. My attorney was the former Department of Consumer Protection Commissioner, Jerry Farrell. So, we've been having communications to, he is right, they haven't made a decision, but what they wanted was to get the special permit approved from here so they can make that right decision.
I think it's material whether we're negotiating that or not. I mean, negotiations, their success or they fail. Why they fail? It could be that party, it could be this party, it could be a third party. That's a material.
Do you think it's a material whether or not, whether or not your client showed up at negotiation?
It's totally material. All right, and that's a question of fact that-
Not only that, but it's a question-
It's a question of fact that you're not wanting to represent to this commission at this time?
No, no, I'm saying, you know, there was communication on the price, but that's a material. It is a material.
So, are you saying right now that you need a special permit?
Yeah.
Want you guys to approve it? For you to get a liquor license. So, if we were to grant you a special permit tonight, you feel, you feel that you'd get a liquor license?
Yes.
Do you feel the same way? If we gave him a special permit tonight, he would be granted the license?
No.
So, we have a dispute. Why, why do you feel that way? I mean, okay, let me ask you, why do you feel that if you get the special permit, do you have any documentation that shows that if we granted it to you, you're 100% guaranteed to get that license?
We're, we're, I'll just put it this way. Since we're first in line, what we had, and there's a lot of documentations with Liquor Control with this whole file, this file is number one on their list. The reasoning for that is with Mr. McCann and his parties with all the accusations they've made and obviously all of them were false. So, they're looking at bigger picture. So, to the end of this story, what's going on is they want to know that as long as this place can be used for retail. It used to be a physical train. I think, I don't know the exact aspect of the building, but it used to be a retail. It's zoned for retail right now. They just want to make sure you guys stamp it and say, okay, there can be a retail package store.
Now, what do you say?
Well, Ted, Mr. Patel did not answer your question. All right? I disagree with him. I, I don't think it's a slam dunk as he makes it seem to be that if you grant the special permit, he will get his, his permit. He's something, he's having a posting, there's a monster's fee. So, it's-
He keeps referring to saying he's first in line. Do you know that if you're first in line, you're, he's going, like, they have it, so they're going to act on it?
He's first in line. I disagree with him.
What I'm, what I'm wondering is if he's representing to us, this order completes his application and he's first in line. So, they're going to have an application for them, they're going to have to act on. And if it's a completed application and you have all the ducks in a row, is he going to be given the permit, the liquor license?
I don't know that. I don't know that. It's not my decision. It's up to Liquor Control.
But could, could he be given the liquor license?
He could.
Are there other mitigating factors that he wouldn't get?
In other words, is it just the order that you file it or are there other factors that are concerned?
There are those factors of Bob Lawson.
What are those other factors?
Well, you have to go through the application itself and the grassing of the application. I know that Liquor Control's looking at certain things about signatures and things of that nature.
So, basically, scribblers, scribblers issues.
My understanding is, it's not a scribblers.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
You mentioned that there are other factors, so you do know what some of them might be. So, we were wondering if you could share with us what those, what those other factors might be.
My understanding is Liquor Control, my contact with him today, this is Mike Kula, one of the investigators, his application's first in line. My understanding is Liquor Control holds the application for a one-year period. Okay? In case there's any changes, leases, things of that nature. It's not the regulations. I read top of it. It's not in the statute.
What's not in the statute?
Yeah, Liquor Control holds the application for one year. All right, so that needs to be challenged a bit. It's not regulations. See, statutes allow the commissioner of Consumer Protections to promulgate or make, formulate regulations to carry out the-
Sure.
-doings of the department. All right, it's not there. I mean, that hasn't been challenged yet, it may be.
So, what's going to challenge? A year? I'm sorry, you're saying?
All right, so, I mean, they hold the application for a year.
Yeah.
Okay. Mike Kula indicated to me, all right, this is not approval. In other words, he is first in line now, but however, it's spectacularly indicated to me that if the lease that he signed or his, he signed for the 2311, the old, the old, the current, well, the current, is invalidated, then my client is next. They're, they're in the batter's box room on deck.
So, let me understand this. If the lease is valid, or if, well, actually, if we were to, because all that we have before us is the special permit.
That's correct.
So, if we, if we were to grant the special permit, now he would have a lease, a current lease with this new address, 2346, Boston Post Room.
Yeah, I don't know anything about this.
Okay, so, we now have a lease that is, that allows for liquor. And so, that allow, if we grant the special permit tonight, he now will have a lease, effective lease that allows for him to sell liquor, that he will now submit to, to Liquor Control or, you know, Consumer Control, whatever the department, the state department is. He will now submit that to them. So, won't that make sort of the fact that that prior lease is void, is or isn't void irrelevant?
You're almost there. You know, I almost agree with you. Okay? However, I wish Consumer Protection had the logic maybe that we have, that you grasp me onto. In other words, the lease was signed almost a year ago.
Sure.
Nobody took possession. So, therefore, no deposits were paid, no rents were paid, nothing like that. So, therefore, as far as I'm concerned, if they ever took possession, the lease isn't valid.
No, I understand.
All right, yeah. But, however, Consumer Protection, it's not good enough for them. Down speed ship to the legal department. So, I started what's called a declaratory action, should be required. All right, tell the judge, is the lease any good or no good? All right? You don't have to be Einstein to say that it's no good. That's what they're, if I had that declaratory judgment today, I would tell you this from what I heard from Consumer Protection, my application would be first.
Okay, but if we were to grant him today the special permit, then he would have an effective lease if this 2346-
If he has it.
Yeah, if he has a lease, he would have an effective lease that allows him to sell liquor and he, and then the lease that he had with Sam's liquor is sort of relevant to-
If he's relevant, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, for consumer support. All right.
Yeah.
So, then basically, this decision here will blow up your declaratory judgment action, right?
Well, it, it, no, it would, it would because it doesn't invalidate my lease.
Well, no, but that, then you could sue him for nonperformance. I mean, that would be a-
Well, that's, that's something-
Yeah, that's something-
But not a liquor license. It's a lease and I'll sue for all the bad goods.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, but that's different than giving a special-
I just want to know what, what we're doing here with the special permit and, okay. I think I have a clear-
The special permit, from my understanding, if he gets a special permit, he has to apply, reapply, but if that, my application was given first in line.
That's fine.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, I, if that's clear to me.
Do you hear that if there's anyone from the public who's concerned about this liquor store actually showing up in this location?
Well, I mean, it's, it's just moving across the street.
No, we're all separate now.
Thank you, counsel.
Let's listen to-
For or against?
Okay, so, any more questions from us? No. Questions, questions from our guests?
I'm the owner of Anthony Antonio from Guilford, Connecticut, the owner of Westwood's Plaza. And I have a special permit on my property right now. I remember when Danny had to get it. Oh, I'm sorry. I remember when Danny, the original owner, that package store has been there for 40 years and now Anthony Palumbo has the, the application for the next. All of the stuff about whether who's first and who's second is based on whether a lease is valid. And the lease was never valid, it was never consummated because if it was, he'd be suing me to move in. If I had a valid lease, he would have got a key, he would move in. Everybody here is not, I mean, if I gave you anybody a lease, they would move in on it. it, they would move on it, or he would be suing me to move in. So, obviously, the lease was never valid, the lease was never, um, consummated, it had never had a deposit, it never had keys exchanged, it was based on a sale, and Mr. Patel figured once Sam moved, he could steal the permit and just move across the street. But that, that property does have a special permit on it, and it has had it for almost forty years.
So, it wasn't grandfathered?
Well, no, it does.
What was selling coming into effect there?
Nineteen fifty.
So, it could have been without a special permit.
I remember when, when Danny actually moved, the original owner, Danny Spelling, Danny Spelling, yeah.
Okay, so, there, there was a special permit then filed, does anyone know that for sure?
Well, we didn't research that file, because we had this file to, yeah, to.
Thank you.
So, so, how would that?
I wish Counselor would.
Yeah.
Well, if it's a nonconforming use, little use, and, for example, if they don't have the permit, then that grandfathered use goes away, and they're not permitted to be there. So, if we granted the special permit in the new location, another one can't move in there, because they don't have the special permit under the new brand zone. On the other hand, if they have a special permit, and it runs with the land, then somebody has a right to go in there in the future if they could get a license.
So, so, what we're really deciding is who gets liquor permit?
Well, not really. I think what's going to happen is.
Who's going to sue who?
No. I think what would happen here is if we grant this special permit, if this gentleman wins up at the Liquor Control Commission, he goes in across the street. If he loses, then these guys get a liquor permit to open another store at the same location, 2311. I think that's what happens at the end of the day. The concern is, in the future, if another store closes, or an additional, your dissent, next census, there's more permits permitted in town, because the number of stores you can have is by, like, maybe twenty thousand in population, don't quote me on that number, but something like that. One permit's allowed, so if a new one's allowed, someone can go across the street.
But, but the special permit will stop once they no longer are running that business there?
Well, see, that's the problem, I think it runs with the land.
Certainly, as opposed to a nonconforming use.
Which would be extinguished if the permit that allows you to be in there with that use goes away. So, that's, that's what, what could happen.
Do you know exactly how far apart you are from, how many feet you are from 2346, uh, from your Sam's liquor store right now?
I'm probably, literally, I, I know they're, but, you know, the street. Across the street. As, well, I just want to go back to one thing.
It's going to be listed.
Um, as Mr. McCann was saying, he spoke to Mike Kula, that's the agent that's been in charge of this file for twelve months now. That's the same agent that the meeting was missed. So, I know what he's stating, that what he said to him is completely false. So, that's one thing I want to clear up. The other thing is, once you, see, this whole file is in, not in the charge of talent Guilford. It's in the possession of Department of Consumer Protection. So, once they see we can validate this location, that's all they want to see. They've been asking us to validate, we were supposed to come.
Do we have anything in writing from them?
They won't do that, because right now, they have two applications.
Can that money be validated, and if they'll be okay if they're not putting it in writing?
Well, the thing is, the reason they can't put that in writing is because right now, we're number, like, anytime somebody goes in, I had the same thing, we opened a store in Monroe. Same exact thing happened, where there were two people involved with the same permit. It's always the one that applies for the permit first, no matter what, because he's.
Yeah, we understand.
Before, before we take another question, um, we're having a tape situation with Shannon. Shannon, do you want to take a ten minute?
Well, and then break?
We have ten minutes left.
I think the, I mean, I mean, fundamentally, the real question is whether or not this application complies with the fifteen hundred feet separating distance. And the question is, what, does it mean that there has to be a retail store actually operating there? Or perhaps, a more conservative interpretation would be, is there, is there a special permit in existence that would allow one to operate there even if it's not currently operating?
Right, and that really has.
If that's the case, then this application does not comply with that, with that requirement. However, if it's not.
So, so, so then I would ask the question, why would you want to open up that close to it? Why don't you just open up further down the road? That's what we're doing.
The thing is, we, we looked for a location for a while. We had that meeting, they, they dragged this on on purpose, to get their other, but, I mean, I, I'm not going to go into all that, but, we had this, and then, once the meeting was missed, we were advised from somebody at that meeting to see if we want to move next door.
Good.
So, that's where we are.
Does the, does the store across the street currently have a liquor permit? A, I mean, a permit for sale?
I don't know.
Well, yes, there are. Does it, do, do they currently have a liquor permit?
Couldn't have. It's within fifteen hundred feet.
No, no. Tomorrow. No, they existed. No, I'm saying, tomorrow.
Sounds like.
Could, if I went in there and I wanted to go lease, could I open up a liquor store where Sam's was tomorrow?
If you had a liquor permit?
No. I want to go in there and open up the liquor store that was there.
You need a liquor permit.
So, there's no liquor permit currently?
I guess, yeah. So, my question is, um, does the store across the street currently have a permit for the sale of liquor?
No.
No, there is no permit.
Okay, so, so, is a special permit allowed by?
Because if Mr., Mr. Antonio's is correct, which, he said that there was a special permit issued, whether it was forty years ago or whatever it was, does that mean that there, that the property is, quote unquote, used for a retail package store?
Right, and, or does it mean that you have to have a outgoing business that liquor license? Is that what it means?
Well, I just want to put something else. He, he did an eviction of the old person that leased from him, so if he did the eviction, how can a special permit be the, if it's on the land record?
A special permit is something that's granted to the owner of the property.
Right.
And then the subsequent owners of the property.
Alright.
Alright, so, any more questions, comments?
Yes.
Yes? Anything?
Lauren, May 2311 Boston Post Road, and I just wanted on the record that there wasn't any eviction, that Sam abandoned the property. Thank you. And, somebody else would like to speak?
Well, listen, for a code, yeah, the level thirty-seven brokerage lane Guilford. I am the other applicant. Um, I have my application in, I guess, second. Um, I was also told, you know, that time, uh, they were looking at mine as well, so, I don't know, you know, where it first, second, what that all means, but, I held a permit before in the state of Connecticut.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, well, also too, being a, you know, a, um, neighbor of that property, um, placard wise, I mean, there were some people asking questions in my neighborhood, which is across the street, you know, from that. Shouldn't there have been a placard or something put out there for planning and zoning?
There is, there is, big, big green sign up.
There is, there is. I saw it today.
Commercial sales sign.
But it's only on the side coming, it's only on the side going east?
I, I've never seen a sign. The only sign I've seen.
It only has to be on the property.
I, I only see a real estate sign there. I did not see a planning and zoning.
I, I, I seen it.
Rented window, or usually they're by themselves on, you know.
Reggie, uh, I reviewed the site, and I saw a single, um, hearing notice on the commercial sign in the front.
That's all that's required, right?
Yeah.
That's what's required, and I also saw the same sign.
Right, sorry.
Okay, alright, good. Anyone else? Last chance.
Okay, I have some, um, letters that are, a couple of letters, please. These are from tenants at 2311 Boston Post Road. From Evolution Martial Arts, on August sixth, to who would make concern, I am writing on behalf of the tenants of Westwood's Plaza in regards to the vacant liquor store. While it is said, previous owner vacated the property, we very much hope to see another tenant in the same location soon. Historically, the liquor store provided a stream of traffic into our plaza, and its tenants' traffic flow is our life, um, lifeblood. We look forward to someday seeing the same flow, um, bringing those home. The space is there, the zoning is there, history is there, and the other tenants, so they are waiting, with fingers crossed, for the right person to settle in. Restaurants, antiques, stores, and sign-in shops, sandwich shops, pizza places, cards, incoming photo stores, martial arts schools, have all coming on, but once we tour Plaza, as always, the liquor store would be a shame, uh, detriment to our current businesses, to see that one forever. Sincerely, Christian Lee Howaway, Senior, from Evolution Martial Arts. And there's a similar letter that is from Peggy Bustle at Charlotte Arts Boutique, that's also on that property. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Maybe could you just give those to Katie, so she can?
Yes, I will.
Right. Anything else?
I think it's great that businesses are, are, are very anxious to get into the West End of who wants.
So good, I love you. Alright, anything else? Anyone else?
Seems like if Mr. Antonio and Mr. Patel get together, it could solve this problem very quickly.
Over a poker game.
Well, it would seem to me, if, if we could, it seems he just needs to have a letter of some kind that says, this space in question is allowed a retail use. I, I mean, at this point, if we just said that, would that be enough for him to be able to go get his permit or not get his permit? I, I mean, it's, whoever has it, I mean, but, I thought that's what I heard him saying, that he needs to prove that this space is a retail space. Either one is, they're TS2, they're both retail.
Right, the, the aspect that I can wrestle with myself is that, is that a liquor store now? And, it's certainly within fifteen?
Well, there's only one way that's going to get settled, and that is to somebody to move off, then schneid, make something happen. So, if we, is that, is that?
That's a good voice. Get off the schneid.
So.
I'm tired. But, it's a, it's a, Brian, since it's a special permit, um, it's not currently granted.
The new store we talking about?
The new store.
Well, it's, well, retail would be approved. It, it was currently a fitness center, so I'm sure he had to get his own change when he did that. So, it needs to go back to re, or use change, use change, so it needs to go back to retail, whether specific to alcohol beverages. Is that irrelevant?
Well, in this case, he, he needs a special permit to have a liquor store at TS2 zone, so it's a different, it's not really a use, it's a special permit.
Could we get, can we say, um, can we have a letter that says, if he does receive a liquor license, then you would get a special permit?
Well, we could, I mean, we could talk about that, but, we could, I, I think that's probably best to talk about during the discussion, to see if we can.
We've kind of gathered as much as we can. Um, can I get a motion to close the special hearing?
So, move second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Let's take a, a couple minute break while we switch tapes, um, if someone wants to run out. The. We just took a break to change tapes. We have not transacted any business or made any decisions while we were gone. Um, need an approval, uh, we want to make a little change to the agenda, we want to move Guilford Savings Bank Site Plan Approval up, and then we're going to go into our deliberations. Can I get a motion on that?
So, moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
You're on.
I'll start with, uh, Publicity Bank, and then I will. Good evening.
Good evening.
Things still evening. I'm Kyle Eagleson, COO and Treasurer of Guilford Savings Bank. Joining me from the bank is Renee Palenbergh, our Senior Vice President, head of retail. Um, and what I'll do is I'll just give a brief overview, um, of our renovation project, very brief, and, and the goals, and then I'll turn it over to Russ to, from CK Architects to walk through the details of the project. So, with the renovation plan, what we're looking to do is adapt a bit of the building to meet, um, the changing customer needs, changing customer financial needs, um, and also modify the space to allow us to keep the corporate headquarters in the existing building, um, on the green for foreseeable future. So, that's about it. I can turn it over to Russ for the details on it. Thank you.
So, I'm Russell Campagni, from CK Architects, 131 Boston Street, Guilford, Connecticut. And, um, we've been working for some time, sort of exploring various options for, um, being able to, sort of, reallocate the space enough so that they have enough corporate office space to sort of meet their current needs into the future. And, um, they've recognized that the, the retail branch, which they want to keep there, it's a real staple on the edge of the green, um, doesn't meet the square footage that it once did. And so, um, they've also had some real feedback and issues with the main entrance off Park Street, which, um, they've had some falls and some other things, because there's a transition that does not meet ADA. And the other entrance that comes in the back is a little difficult for them to manage from a security point of view, because there's multiple entrances coming in. So, um, the proposal, which is mostly internal changes, is a few external changes that we've, um, gone through, um, Historic District, we've had to receive one variance, and now we're before you for just a site plan review associated with the changes, and I'll just go through them. So, the first change is, um, in order to help to consolidate the interior of the branch into the front half of the building, um, they'd like to move the canopy that currently is on back about eighty feet on, from, from their property line from the street, move it up about forty feet closer to the road, and that would allow for actually the consolidation of the teller space, such that, right now, there's an independent space that actually services those, and from a staffing and monitoring point of view, it's difficult. What they would do is have a more traditional relationship, where the tellers that are servicing the lobby would also be able to service the, um, the drive-through teller needs. Um, we've gone through Historic District, um, and, uh, and actually discussed several options, um, and, uh, we actually received a variance, um, that allowed for it to be in two locations there, it worked on an interior plan, but actually, it came full circle with Historic District after our sidewalk, that they felt with the way that was positioned, its proximity to the other buildings, that, um, that they allowed us to have it as close as we wanted, which was a better interior plan. So, we gained approval from Historic District to move it forward, and we still have adequate stop sign, um, distance here to have the stop that currently exists before we cross the sidewalk, and actually, having less space, but as you pull forward rather than more, is actually, I think, a safer condition than there is now, where there's actually some time to get some speed before you, before you hit the sidewalk area that's a little bit blind on that side. Um, so that is the one, one piece that's the exterior proposal to change. Um, there will be a drive-through ATM that is proposed back here, and the night safety drop, um, night security drop would be back here. This also allows enough distance such that if someone is using ATM or chooses to use the ATM and not do the drive-up teller, even during working hours, because actually, they do find that people just, I guess, don't want to interact with someone, and will choose to use the drive-up ATM rather than go to the teller. Um, the front forward position of the canopy allows for both the service, um, and, and people can pass, and there's not a congestion point of view. So, occasionally, on large congestion days, it also allows for two, uh, really four additional storage positions on this lane, um, that avoids some of the conflict that occurs in the rear area here, when they do have heavy days, when there are people queued up in that location. So, then, coming around the bank, the other major change is, we're proposing to move the, the sort of main accessible entrance into the lobby, um, onto the south side off of, um, Boston Street. And so, what that allows us to do, instead of, um, having, having this be sort of a non-ADA entrance, that you go up a few steps off the green, um, and the, and having the ADA entrance coming in here, and having to come all the way through the building to, to come to the lobby area, this centralized location actually allows, um, a, a more direct and single ADA entrance into that space. They will keep the Park Street open, and there is potential plans that there'll be a financial, um, services group that will go in, um, the front, that will be associated with the bank, but has to have certain delineations and separate entrances for FDIC and notification and such. So, this entrance will still be an active entrance, and still be open and, and a participant in the street, but it, it won't be the branch retail entrance, the main retail entrance will be focused in, they'll direct customers into this location. But we have the ability to then have a, a walking ramp to come up and in here through an ADA with no steps, as well as the servicing of the existing ADA entrance in the back to come as it serves now across. And then, as part of that, right now, all the screening and high planting that's here is associated with a set of condensers that are located on this side, which are visible and, and actually produce some noise on this side. We're proposing to actually move those up into the canopy, and so there's a, um, sort of a roof that comes up like a hip, but then has a, um, area that's screened, so they wouldn't be visible from the street, but they would be contained here, so we're moving them from a very visible location over here, opening up and taking out some of that large urbanity that's on that south side, and, um, moving them into, I think, what is a better location on that north side, that's going to be more discreet and, um, and less visible. The other change is, there's some landscaping changes on the entrances, they're going to dress up and sort of cut out some of this, um, existing concrete patio that's in here, and open it up to, um, to allow for some better planting and such. Um, and there is a new egress door that's required, it's actually, I think, was originally built nonconforming, but there's, um, egress travel distance problems within the way that the offices are set up, so we had to add one, um, additional exit-only, um, door off of this side. And I can show you in elevation and plan, let's, actually, more. So, I can show you, um, in plan, quickly. So, this is the existing layout here, which has the large set of tellers that comes around, and really, all of this area is dedicated to retail, which is, um, more than half of the first floor, they'd like to take some of that back. So, what we're proposing is to consolidate the lobby in here, have the new entrance come through a vestibule and into this lobby here, have a row of more traditional teller spaces here, servicing also the drive-through on this side, and then actually allowing this to turn into a more corporate condition, where we're putting a new conference room here with some new windows that look out onto, um, to Boston Street, um, sort of a waiting receiving area here. Um, the main entrance will remain, comes over here, but this will be for the executive and the financial planning and mortgages and those sorts of things, as opposed to the retail side. And, uh, and then a set of new offices that are basically getting spruced up and rearranged to be a little bit more appropriate to the, um, to the current hierarchy of the, of the bank. Outside, um, I'll go around each of the facades, but on the front facade, really, not much changes, the roof line changes slightly, this is, um, doesn't have that sort of canopy, um, condition for the, um, for the, uh, condenser unit, so the roof is a little steeper in order to get high enough to cover them. Um, as you come around to the south side, um, so this is the main facade on Boston Street, the existing is here, we are adding a couple windows for that conference room, we're sprucing up the existing entrance here by putting a little bit of a pediment on it, and then this is that new retail entrance, and that was worked through with, um, the Historic District. We originally were proposing it to come in here, and they wanted us to sort of keep the historic building intact, and asked us to pull it back onto this addition that's here, this one-story addition. So, um, that is in keeping, I think, with the appearance and, uh, details of the original building. So that is in keeping, I think, with the appearance and details of the original building. This is that new egress-only door that we had to add, and there's some egress emergency lighting that's associated with that. Again, that went through the historic district and was approved. The sort of, what is it, east facade is pretty much, you know, you don't pick up much. This is forward a little bit more with the depth of the condensers. And then on the last facade, which again, from a public way you don't see, but you'll see as you go through the drive-through lane, you've got the new canopy that slid forward with the reuse of the existing windows, and then the new ATM and night drop box that's being added here. This has a dark skies cutoff light in here. The new lighting that's proposed for the canopy will actually be recessed lighting and have a full cutoff condition here. We have some security FDIC requirements for keeping minimal lighting on in some of these areas, so this will be on all night. This will have a portion on all night, but we, the Boston Street side and the Park Street side actually have no interface, so those don't have to, and we have an agreement with the HDC to cut off on the residential side, which, you know, is up more on the Park Street side as much as on the, as up on the Boston Street side, to cut those off at 10 o'clock, I think we agreed to. So parking, drive-through condition, other than having a little bit shorter staging before entering into the sidewalk, the existing stop sign condition, really, I don't think we're changing much from a vantage point of their existing special permit. It's a very small alteration, and those are the elements that actually are affected on the exterior. As far as the numbers of people, I don't really think there's a, I mean, the square footage isn't changing. We're not adding any square footage. It's really a repurposing of existing. And between the retail and business office, actually, we're taking over more business office. I think if anything, we would see a reduction in the counts because of the way that codes are written that way, between retail space and office business use. So I'm happy to answer any questions that come up associated with the proposed modifications.
Meets all of the zoning regs when we have that variance in place right now.
They already got approval from the historic district?
Yes.
Yep.
Did you do the Madsen?
Yes.
That was amazing.
Thank you.
That has nothing to do with this.
Well, it has a lot to do with that. That's quite a good.
I would like to take this opportunity to say that Madsen Bridge is the main.
Good work. Thanks, Walter.
You still going to have cookies on Friday?
Don't look until Friday.
Saturday, too.
All right.
Should I read a motion?
Please.
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan revision for the Guilford Savings Bank, 1 Park Street, map 40, lot 11, as shown on Guilford Savings Bank Plans prepared by CK Architects of Walville and Associates, LLC. Eight sheets dated April 30, 2014, and revised July 20, 2014. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's what I'm on. We received a new copy.
This application is approved with the following conditions. I'm going to leave this in here, but it's, we know it's already been done, but I'll leave it here anyway. That prior tuitions of a building permit plans be approved by the historic district commission. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code.
Second.
Okay. What's any other discussion?
It meets all of the zoning code. It's a site plan review, and that's the main consideration. And the one variance that was required has been obtained, so I'm in favor of it.
I think it's in keeping with everything we like about the bank and Guilford. Walter? Any other observations?
I already.
Good, good. All right, so let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, none. Congratulations. Good work.
Thank you for staying.
Yeah, apologize for the delay.
COO and vice president.
Go get them. Go get them. All right, so shall we deliberate? Let's talk about Person. Let's do Person first, okay? First person.
That should be made for.
I'll make a motion. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a coastal area management site plan for Martha Person, 42 and 43, Marshall Island, map 10, lot 57, as shown on a site development plan prepared for Martha Person, dated 5/2/13, revised to 6/26/14, prepared by Harking and Engineering, LLC, and architectural plans. This application is approved with the following conditions. One, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any demolition or site regrading. Two, soil stockpiles should be contained by silt fencing and bore hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation controls measures shall be backed by orange construction fencing and be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement. Three, a note should be placed on the coastal area management plan indicating the west side setback of the property will be maintained for view access according to section 276-91J of the Planning and Zoning Regulations. Four, the septic system and stormwater galleys shall be protected with geotextile fabric anchored in accordance to manufacturer specifications. Five, unsuitable material under the stormwater galleries shall be removed and replaced with select fill septic sand as shown on the detail for the sanitary system installation. Six, the storage and staging area shall be located outside of the tidal wetlands and above the coastal jurisdiction line as shown on the coastal site plan. Seven, except as specifically shown on the approved plans, no equipment or material, including but not limited to fill construction materials, excavated material or debris shall be disposed, placed, or stored in any wetlands on or off-site, nor shall any wetlands be used as a staging area or accessway. Eight, that a note be placed on the plan indicating that a vegetated buffer remains between the stacked hay bales and the coastal resource in accordance to section 276-91K of the Planning and Zoning Regulations. Nine, according to the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, Connecticut General Statutes, sections 22A-90 through 22A-112, no shoreline, flood, and erosion control structures are allowed to be constructed at the property since the property is being developed after January 1, 1980. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut.
I'll second that.
All right, so let's have a discussion.
Do you lead from that first paragraph? And architectural plans?
Okay.
Second, you agree to that?
Aye.
Okay, so what was the conflict between what the state, the EEP, and what the town wants? Do we need to resolve that?
Sounded, well, it sounded like the applicant didn't really care which way it went. He just left it up to us to decide.
Right.
If the town has certain regulations which go beyond what the state wants, I'm, you know, in favor of going with what the town has, if we think that would offer better protection. If we think the state plan would offer better protection, I would go with that. So that would be the only, and I tell you the truth, I don't know, but because staff recommended that we keep that in there, I would tend to go with the galleys.
Yeah, I agree, because, you know, Kevin is really on spot with everything he's going over, and I would really want to keep it in if that's what Kevin wants, that's what I would feel comfortable with.
Number nine is the overkill that we were sort of talking about when I was going back toward the little attorney proning. So we know that they won't be constructing any erosion control structures.
Right, right. So.
I have a, go ahead. I was just going to say, I'm going to vote for this either way, but putting in galleys means more work, more digging, more disturbing soil than having gutters that have natural flow. So the question in my mind is, is the pluses and minuses of doing it either way, because John Goucher is also a very smart guy. And so I will go either way on this. If it were my property, I think probably I would want to do what John Goucher said in this case.
Now, you know, what you said is true, that it's going to involve a little bit of work, and it's going to be digging, and it's going to be disturbance, and it's going to be all that, but it's over with in a month, or whatever, how many, you know, weeks it is. And then for the rest of, you know, decades, it's going to be in place. So, you know, which one works better is probably going to be better. And honestly, I don't know.
I don't know either.
At some point, you have to pick one. And, you know, Kevin is really, has always come right on where I think he should. So I'm leaning towards Kevin's, but certainly, you know.
Well, isn't Kevin's a little more stringent, and we probably should adhere to the more stringent, I would be my.
Especially since the applicant has no problem with it.
Right.
It's not an issue, we'll go with what we think has the better protection.
Walter?
All the other comment I'd make is, you know, I am sympathetic to what a lot of the neighbors have said and a lot of the concerns, and for that matter, what Sid said about the next application. But the fact is, the regulations are what they are, and it sounds to me, at least I'm convinced from the technical experts presenting tonight, that this does conform to the regulations that are in effect. While I also wish at times there were other regulations that went further, and I know there was some legislation that was attempted after the last two hurricanes, it sort of got watered down at the state level before it got passed. I would encourage the public and Sid to get involved in the legislative process up in Hartford and perhaps at the federal level as well, to get some of these regulations changed, to offer more protections. But the fact is that they are what they are now. We're bound to follow the regulations as they exist, and this application, I feel, meets those regulations, so we're bound to approve it. I don't think we have the leeway to change what we wish we had here. We have to act with what we can.
I couldn't agree more. You know, we're bound by the law as it is now. We can't say, oh, you know, I wish it would say this, or it may say that in five years, or it could say this. That's great, and if it said that now, we'd be bound by that now.
Yes, yeah.
But the law is the law is the law.
Absolutely. I wish it did at times, but it doesn't, so we're bound by it. So I am sympathetic to the public, what they brought up.
Richard?
I agree with Ray, what Soheartily says. In my line of business with national corporations, companies, we abide by the string, what supersedes is the strictest, and this is what the town regulations are.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is a CAM application, so I just don't see, I mean, most of those concerns that the neighbors brought up are very significant, especially for this site, but it looks like this site meets every single requirement that we have. In terms of the galleries, I have to say, I think, I think I have always agreed with Kevin until today. Based on the record before us, I think that the slope is a little bit too tight and goes down a little too fast, and I think that John Goucher is closer to right in that the galleries will not be as good a choice as the other options that he was discussing. But that would really, I think, would require a lot of extra analysis to figure that out, and it's very likely that Kevin is actually correct on that, so I'm going to vote aye either way.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is Kevin's way is the right way. Are we in agreement on that, basically? All right, so how do we go about making that motion? How do we put that?
It's already done.
It's already in.
Vote yes.
The current version is Kevin's.
Okay, so good. So are we at the point where we're all ready to vote, discuss that? Okay, so all those in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, congratulations, good work. Have a beautiful home. Hope they enjoy it. Next up is our friend Chris McManus on Seaside Avenue.
I'll read this. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a coastal manager site plan for, I was reading the wrong one. Okay. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a coastal area management site plan application for Chris McManus at 78 Seaside Ave., map 29, lot 11E, as shown on application dated July 2, 2014, coastal site plan 78 Seaside Ave., dated 1/3/14, revised 8/5/14, and subsurface sewage disposal system replacement 78 Seaside Ave., dated 9/25/13, revised 8/5/14, prepared by Thomas A. Stevens and Associates, and architectural plans, three sheets dated July 2, 2014. This application is approved with the following conditions. One, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any demolition or site regrading. Soil stockpiles should be contained by hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be backed by orange construction fencing and be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement. Two, a note should be placed on the coastal area management plan indicating the north side of the property that shall be maintained for view access. Three, the septic system be protected with geotextile fabric anchored in accordance to manufacturer specifications. For the storage and staging areas shall be located outside of tidal wetlands and above the coastal jurisdiction line as shown on the coastal site plan. Five, except as specifically shown on the approved plans, no equipment or material, including but not limited to fill construction materials, excavated materials or debris shall be disposed, placed, or stored in any wetlands or on or off-site, nor shall any wetlands be used as staging area or accessway. Six, a licensed surveyor shall stake out the location of the house, septic system, pressure lines, leaching fields, and limits of guarding prior, grading prior to any site construction. This application is based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut.
Second.
Okay, so let's discuss this little gem.
This is on the same footprint. It's still under height, and the footprint is slightly decreased in terms of the house. Also, the, this new septic is better. It's just much better.
That's what I'm trying to get at him. It's like, well, you know, literally a storm or something, wouldn't you rather a septic than?
Than a cesspool that can just become what we think of as a cesspool.
Yes.
The, I mean, the fact that we face a longer-term risk for Seaside Avenue in general, you know, this is an existing home, and they're raising it, and they're handling maybe not the entire foreseeable future, but all the way into the middle term.
It's their risk.
It's their risk.
Right, and when they're kind of doing what we really want people to do, which is to stabilize the area and make it better.
They're going beyond that in terms of.
Right, they're doing more.
Of height.
All right. We all talked down, good. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Abstentions, none.
All right.
Wonderful.
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit for Guilford, a better chance at 143 Church Street, map 46, lot 135, for a deck in the R1 zone as shown on the application dated 7/9/14. This application is approved with no conditions. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code. The special permit is effective on August 15, 2014, and upon filing with the town clerk.
Second.
I'd like to call the question.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
You don't have to let me call the question.
That's okay. I want you to call it.
I know.
Good for you.
I know that.
All right, so they get their deck. Mr. Patel.
I'll make a motion.
What would you like to move?
Yes, this is a motion that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit for Sirco Patel for retail sale of alcoholic beverages at 2346 Boston Post Road, map 78, lot 14, as shown on an application dated June 12, 2014, and is heard at a public hearing on August 5, 2014. This application is approved with the following conditions. The first condition is that the special permit will not be approved until he receives a liquor license.
The special permit is conditional upon the receipt.
Yeah, I would say it's contingent upon.
Okay, it's contingent, okay. The special permit is contingent upon the receipt of the liquor license, and we.
And a valid lease.
And a valid lease.
With the landlord of this property.
And.
And at that point, it runs with the land? Or at that point, it is to term of lease?
It runs with the land. I don't know if we can, because I was.
It would run with the land. It's the owner of the property that has it unless they were.
Yeah, I was talking right about that. And this application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with 2736, 27386 of the zoning code. The special permit is effective on August 15, 2014, and upon filing with the town clerk.
Second.
Technicality.
Sure.
August 6, not August 5.
All right.
Because they're liable, New Zealand lawyers, you're right.
Sounds good.
Fifteenth.
No, you're talking about that. What day is today?
What day is today?
It's almost tomorrow. Keep on going, it'll be tomorrow soon.
This is a tough one, you know, we're clearly not equipped here to make, there's obviously a dispute of the facts. We're not a fact-finding team here that's going to determine who should get this liquor permit. But in any event, to start with, alcoholic beverages are okay across the street, so it's hard to argue that it's not acceptable to have it at this location, since it's basically just across the street from it. The issue, I think, that will need to be resolved is going to be between the landlords and tenants. There's probably going to be a lawsuit there. It's none of our business. They need to work that out amongst themselves. The point is that whether or not there's a liquor permit granted will determine whether this thing goes in here. If it is granted, then this guy gets it, and he's going in here. If it isn't, then the other place is back in business, and this goes away.
Yep.
Now, there is a risk, okay, I will admit, that if this guy does get it granted, I believe if a special permit is what we gave permission at the old location to have a liquor store, would still continue to run. And if in the future somebody buys a permit, or there's another permit granted to the town, and somebody gets that permit, and somebody decides to open up there, you could have two liquor stores within, you know, violating the regulations, okay? So it's not impossible for that to happen. How probable it is, I don't know.
But even if it happens, it's not the end of the world.
It's not the end of the world necessarily.
Because there are regulations.
Yeah.
Well, the problem is, we've allowed to, essentially, allowed a violation, okay? Because we've allowed two of these to occur.
But what is the actual harm to the community, you know?
But, on the other hand, you know, if things, if this guy doesn't get it, and it reverts to the other owner who has that, so the problem goes away. So it isn't going to be a problem. And if this guy gets it, what are the chances of another store, you know?
Well, and also, is that place going to be vacant, too? So there might be a tenant in there.
So, I mean.
I think that it's not really our.
And if this guy gets it, what are the chances of another store, you know?
Well, and also, is that what's gonna be baked until, so there might be a tenant in there?
So, I mean.
I think that we, it's not, it's not really our job to decide who gets this.
Right, I, I think it's, it's hard to be, to make an argument that, well, it's okay at this side of the street, but if we move it across, it isn't. It's the same neighborhood, the same general location, it's gonna be the same type of store. I'd say let the liquor commission and the applicants fight it out, and whoever wins, wins. Not really a land use issue. Anyways, that's my opinion, but I'm certainly willing to listen to the rest of the commissioners.
I agree.
I agree, too.
This is, this is a close one for me. My problem is that it's, it's really not clear to me whether or not the store across the street is used as a liquor store.
Currently, you're saying, or?
Well, our regulations don't say.
They just say the word "used," and.
Was used, is used.
Whether we're talking about an actual liquor permit, or whether or not we're talking about the special permit, is, it's silent on there. We just have the word "used," and "used" is a.
So is this something that we need to have?
Grand and general word.
Yeah, we have the zoning guys.
Yeah, that would, that would be horrible for us to have to figure that out. But I think that ultimately, I, I think that we actually shouldn't decide this tonight. I know several of you are hinting at, at that being pretty horrible to go through this for yet another meeting, the things that I, and it would be, but, but we, we just, we don't have the word "used" locked down, and I.
Well, it's, I mean, I, I think it's clear. I mean, it certainly was used. It's out of business now, it's closed. If you go there, you can't buy any liquor.
Right.
It's out of business.
That is correct.
So it's not being used right now.
So being used, was used, is used, there are all these different.
But it's not used.
What would, what would, you know, what would you sort of looking, what would change your mind to say? Because I'm not saying we should hastily come to any decisions. I think that no matter what way we define the word "used" here, whether it is used or was used, or even if we say that just, just having a special permit on, you know, on the land record means that you can't have a liquor store within fifteen hundred feet.
That's my question. That exactly is my question.
Okay, so even if we were to decide that, even if, even if that was the answer, even if we decided as a town, or the town attorney said, okay, we're going to have a, it, it is the case that if there's a special permit that allows the sale of liquor, no other area within fifteen hundred feet can also have a special permit that allows a sale of liquor. If, if that's the, if that's the actual answer, you know, what we are doing, I don't necessarily think flies in the face of that, because we are, or directly flies in the face of it. Because we're sort of saying, we're almost hedging our bets. We're giving, we're giving the two owners the opportunity to sort of fight this out. And then I doubt that, you know, for there to be another liquor permit, some choice of our business, which is very well possible, it needs to be a census, or I guess you could buy one from another liquor store. And that would have to happen in a short enough time that they're willing to have that, you know, that place vacant right now.
It could happen at any time in the history of Guilford.
No, I know, but there would be any shuffle, yeah, you're right, that could be a shuffle. And I, I just see it being so down the road that for us to foreclose an opportunity for there to be, you know, a business, sort of.
Well, also, you know, we're talking about businesses, and they have to make a profit, and the two of them right across the street from each other, I don't know that they would be viable, even for a short period of time.
I'm sure they would.
That's not our business.
Yeah, sure.
They would, yeah, they would be. Like the Diamond District. It looks like they're all selling the same stuff, and they're all in business.
I don't, I, I guess.
I think that the, the present tense "used" is, is my problem, and I think that this, there's, there's enough of a body of law on this that I think that we could come up with an answer with a certain amount of time in. And so if, if we're voting on it tonight, I'm, I'm not really against granting this, I have to abstain.
Okay, but what if there was, had been a, what if there was a special permit that was granted to Westwood Plaza way back when, but the, but the shopping center was totally full with other businesses? Would that still then prevent you from granting another special permit within fifteen hundred feet of that property? Are there any other places in town?
No, because it says "used," and it's not being used.
Right, so it's not the fact that there was a special permit.
But it doesn't matter what was, it matters what is. What we don't want to have happen is two of these today being used for the purpose. And that's not being used today for that purpose.
Do we need to ask ourselves if there are any other existing special permits for liquor stores that may preempt any other future applicants?
You know, since this is our own reg interpretation, I, I think you're right. I'm gonna vote aye, since we're actually interpreting our own, our own regs.
Well, I guess we can call the question, then, if.
All right, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
No, no against, no abstentions?
It'll be, it'll be here.
It'll be here, that's good, all right. So that's it for the deliberation portion. It is eleven o'clock already. We need to do a couple of receivings of things, and then we're gonna call it quits for the night. What are we receiving? Any ideas?
Yes, special permit, Hersher Karen Rose, Ford Showwick Lane, map thirty-fourteen, zone R-three, special permit for accessory apartment in a single-family dwelling, two-seventy-three dash nineteen, receiving set public hearing date nine-three-fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two, Guilford Agricultural Society, eleven, one-eleven Lover's Lane, map forty, lot one-thirty-eight, zone R-three, temporary modification to special permit, condition to approve, number eight, condition of approval, number eight, approved September fourth, two thousand thirteen, article ten, receiving set public hearing date September third.
So moved.
Second.
I want to discuss this for a second. Do we need to put something in place that they have to come for permanent, or they're just always gonna do temporaries? Is that something we need to worry about, or do we need to think about that? No?
No, it'll be revealed.
All will be revealed.
All will come, all will be obvious.
Well, it's a complete application, right? And it's ready to be received, so.
All right, so.
I'll stand by mine.
All good?
I guess I seconded.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful, so that carries, no opposed?
Guilford Sportsman's Association, five-oh-one Hart Road, map one-eleven, lot two, zone R-eight, special permit, remove one-story building and replace with two-story, two-seven-three dash thirteen, receiving set a public hearing date of eight-twenty-fourteen.
So moved.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so it's eleven o'clock. Do we have any other business that we need to attend to?
Just, we want to amend, there's one more zoning amendment to receive, September seventeen.
And what's that?
Amend two-seventy-three dash one-ninety-four, TS two maximum building size, and two-seventy-three forty-nine, residential units in industrial zones, receive, discuss, and set a public hearing for September seventeen.
These were both recommendations of the zoning committee, that we, that we move forward with these. The first one clarifies outsized sales, and whether, whether or not that is governed by the maximum building size issue. And the second one deals with the, with the contradiction in the regulations. At one point, we say in industrial zones, you can have residential units at one unit per acre, and at other places, we say one unit per lot. So this recommend, this is written to allow residential use of one unit per acre in a resident, in industrial zones. Both of these are recommendations of the zoning committee.
So they carry some weight with them, then?
Yeah. Was this appropriately referred to our, to our commission?
To what?
The zoning committee?
Mm-hmm.
I believe so. I wasn't at that meeting, but I believe you discussed this, and that's what you decided.
We did discuss it.
Yeah.
Ray had left right before we discussed it, so.
I don't, I wasn't at the meeting, so I'm not sure.
We had a couple of bloggers with concerns, that we only had two members out of four. No, I'm, I'm serious about this, because we.
Well, then you want, you wanna discuss it at the next zoning meeting and bring it over?
I mean, the, the reality is, we still have the same procedure in place, where we don't have to have a referral at all.
No, you don't.
So.
You just take this to be my recommendation, that you have a hearing on this.
On George's.
On George's.
Suicide.
Well, we've, we're the ones that brought it to the attention of the zoning committee, because we found there was a deficit in the regulations.
That's right. So we don't have any concerns about the fact that we deliberated on it with fifty percent of our members?
I don't.
Not, not.
All right. You didn't make a statement.
All right, so, so we're.
Do we have to vote on that one?
Vote on that.
All in favor?
Alls in favor.
Can you repeat who made and seconded? Totally missed that.
I think, I think Richard seconded it.
So who was the first?
Who read it?
Well, I, yeah, I read it, and then somebody.
So it's raised motions, Richard's second.
Seconded it.
The only thing I'd like to do before we shut down is, let's pay some bills, as much as that.
We also have this request for storage container, which is a kind of a routine item, when they're building a, they're building a house there, number, correspondence, number one.
You think we can knock it out in two minutes?
No, there's a letter.
Just wing it, if you can.
Permission to allow.
Yes.
Let me just ask, how much time are they looking for, Reg? Do you know, two years? Okay. And what's, the regulations allow that, right? I'm trying, I don't remember what they, okay. What's the max? All right, so I guess I'll make a motion that we allow a storage container while the rear addition interior renovations take place at two-sixty-five Three Mile Course Road, zone R-three, property of Thomas and Tracy DeLuca, for a period not to exceed two years, but to be removed upon the completion of the rear addition and interior renovations if it is within two years.
Second.
So I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now the bills, please. Someone wanna make a motion, pay these bills?
Pay the bills.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's call it an evening, we can come back to the.
We have to get to the thirty minutes from last meeting.
Oh, yeah, all right, did everyone have a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so they look great, I am, we have some great minutes, so thank you for that. Motion to approve the minutes?
Discussion. Just, I wanted to say, I wanted to make sure that I didn't see Attorney Nuff's statement, we'll see you in the fall of twenty fifteen as a groundbreaking, and I would like to include that, and I would like to invite him to back, back in twenty fifteen. But the important thing for the minutes is that he, he did say that, and I'd like to include that, if that's all right.
I remember him saying that, so please include that in the minutes.
I would make.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so approve it with that, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, do we have a motion to adjourn? Any second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.